Good evening and welcome to the third and final fiscal year twenty-five budget hearing hosted by the Boston School Committee and Superintendent Mary Skipper. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United
of the United States of America
and to the Republic
which stands
one nation
one nation
under God
under God
indivisible
indivisible
with liberty
liberty
and justice
justice
for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Parvics to please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins. Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Here.
Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Here.
Mr. Metta. Ms. Polanco Garcia. Oh, sorry. Ms. Polanco Garcia. Mr. Tran.
Present.
Mr. O'Neill.
Present.
And Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. Recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the March twentieth meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the BPS major languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Cabo Veriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The Zoom interpretation feature has been activated. Zoom participants should click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I want to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you to everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at four P M. Please make sure that you were signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Since Superintendent Skipper first presented her preliminary fiscal year twenty-five budget proposal on February seventh, the committee has held two public, two budget hearings, one taking a deep dive into school budgets and another hearing taking a closer look at the central budget. At tonight's meeting, interim chief financial officer David Bloom will share the memo provided to members with the final proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget. No discussion, no discussion or questions will happen at this hearing. We want to make sure we get to hear all of the public comment. However, we will have an opportunity for questions and comments as part of the regular school committee meeting later this evening. Before we get started, I would like to acknowledge and thank Councilor Brian Worrell, Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, for his collaboration feedback during the budget process. Councilor Worrell's contributions are undoubtedly valuable and we appreciate his different approach, his leadership amongst his colleagues to ensure that, to ensure their priorities are represented and a willingness to work together to support our students and families. Now, I would like to invite the interim chief financial officer, David Bloom, to present the memo with the final proposed fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Thank you, Chair and members of the school committee. It's my great honor to be here tonight to propose our one point five billion dollar budget for your vote next week. This budget builds on the budget that was originally proposed to you back in February, taking into account feedback from the committee, the public, many of our school communities, as well as elected officials and others. We believe that this budget reflects, you know, how we can best meet the vision and strategy of the Boston Public Schools to meet the needs of all of our students in this upcoming school year. I want to draw your attention to a couple of key changes reflected in what is presented, is presented tonight and then will be voted on next week. The first is some additional, some additions to school budgets. Every year, the initial proposed budget has a number of reserves that we intend to partially liquidate throughout the process. We've discussed these in our previous hearings. These reserves are typically held in the Budget Office budget and then transferred to the schools. So the changes are outlined in detail in the memo that has been shared with you tonight. But a couple of changes I want to highlight. First is transformation schools get special allocations when their state grant funding runs out. These allocations require additional planning with our transformation and turnaround office, and we're not included therefore in the original allocations we gave you. The Gru and the English got an additional about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each of planned investment since our initial budget proposal. There are a number of smaller, specific instructional programming proposals based on conversations with individual schools and departments that are outlined, such as work with the sixth grade, multiple disability strand, expansion at the Quincy Upper School. And finally, one of the things we're doing throughout the process is ensuring that all schools have at least a minimum foundation for quality to ensure that they are getting at least all of the basics we want to ensure that all of our schools have. One minor technical note I want to mention that you might notice is slightly different in tonight's tables. In our, in the original documents we presented to you, the current budget, so not next year's proposal, but the current budget for grants didn't include a portion of our S R spending for the current year due to a technical error. That technical error has been revised in these updated budgets and only impacts the external funding of schools, so it's not part of what you will be voting on next week. Finally, there were a number of changes to central office budgets as we went through what we call our budget collaborative process of reviewing central budgets in more detail after we had finished with schools, which are a priority. Most of these changes are small in nature, such as moving money between supply and contract accounts. But one noteworthy change is an increase to the budget of the Alternative Education Department, reflected to maintain some centrally funded school-based positions for their middle school alternative education expansion. The work we've done in this revised proposal continues to build on the work in our inclusive education plan, the systemic improvement plan, and all of the Council of Great States Schools reports that we have received over the last year, as well as our O M M E strategic plan. We know that our central office must be in support of our schools so that our schools can be in support of students and families. I'm excited to take the rest of this hearing to listen to feedback from members of the public and then to come back to you later this evening for further discussion about our budget. And with that, Chair, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom, for the update. And because again, this is a budget hearing, I want to pause here for public comment. We'll now move on to public comment. Ms. Parvics.
Thank you, Chair. This budget hearing is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on the superintendent's fiscal year twenty-five budget proposal. Questions on specific school matters are not answered this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specifics policy matters are not answered this time, but may be the subject of a later discussion by the committee. We have thirty-two speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from the speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin with, we will begin with Councilor Brian Worrell, Robert Jenkins, Antonietta Brownell, Allison Doherty, and Sarah Fuller. Please raise your hands so we can find you faster. Thank you. Councilor Worrell. Councilor Worrell. Please accept the prompt. Okay, so we will go to our next, Robert Jenkins. Is Robert Jenkins here? Please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, School Committee Chair. Good afternoon, School Committee Members. Good afternoon, Superintendent.
Mr. Jenkins, could you turn on your camera? Thank you.
Do you see me now?
Yes.
Yes. Hello, everyone. I would like to thank Superintendent Skipper last night having Capitol Planning Department at Madison Park Alumni Reconnection Meeting at my, our alma mater. We had about seventy alumni members who reconnected on the Madison Park renovation project. And, you know, we look forward into having more meetings as they laid out a plan. They want us involved, which was a very good, you know, it was a very good turnout. It was a very good meeting. I've looked at some of the budget and I want to make sure that the budget reflects improving our app or helping to improve our athletic program. Student athletics are very healthy for health and wellness. And it's a lot of transition for our student athletes. I hope that the budget reflects that. One thing I would like to make a quick suggestion on, if it hasn't been given, regarding to John D. O'Brien at Madison Park and the West Roxbury campus. I want to make a suggestion real quick. I know my time is running out is that has there been, or I know you can't answer the question, but moving Boston Latin Academy out to West Roxbury and possibly moving O'Brien back to their former home until a space is, you know, made available for them so that we can, you know, celebrate in twenty twenty-five Madison Park return fifteen years ago. And we know, we know that there's a swing space issue and we're willing to work with the district. We want to make sure that also, as well with other schools, spread primarily that we know that the White Stadium renovation project, which I am I G A member on, is on hold. But making sure that we have enough, the budget reflects us having enough adequate spaces for our student athletes, because we know that is a, you know, a hot topic and there aren't a lot of spaces around. I know this firsthand by being a sports official in a number of sports, especially for high school and Pop Warner. Another thing Excuse me?
You have thirty seconds left.
Hey, real quick, I want to end this one on that. When we look for the long-term, the long facilities plan, we have to include our younger students starting off at third grade, because by the time, if you get ideas from them, by the time some of these projects are in a, a, a near completion.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Antonietta Brownell.
Antonietta Brownell. Hi. Hi. How are you?
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me share tonight. So I just wanted to just humor me. Oh, so first of all, my name is Antonetta Brownell. I am a parent and an educator. I live in East Boston. I don't teach in the same place I live, but I'm a Boston Public School educator. So I just wanted to kind of come here, kind of to speak on behalf of some early educators. And we're talking more the littles like K zero, K one. So I just wanted you guys to humor me for a minute. I'm just going to ask some questions to help you envision the life of an educator in early childhood. You don't have to answer these questions, but I'm like, raise your hand if you ever taught early childhood. If you have, how long have you spent in one of these classrooms? Would you say that someone who spends maybe an hour observing has enough information to make a clear diagnosis? Or would you refer to the educator that spends about six hours a day with the children, five days a week? Which one, in your opinion, would weigh more? Remember, these are highly qualified teachers who have their master's degree and even their PhDs. The life of an early educator is very physically demanding. On average, I make, I probably do about ten thousand steps a day. So I just kind of, you know, and that's before noon. And then I want you envisioned doing this job without the proper supplies. Now, I know oh, gosh, thirty seconds? Wow. Okay. Okay, definitely not enough time. But I guess I just want to do a call to action that the littles in Boston Public Schools need more. I presented a study to the district to prove my theory about this. I did it through the B T U and the only person that showed up was my son's principal. Basically states if we give these kids all that they need,
Thank you, Ms. Brownell.
they don't need much more in the older years.
Thank you very much. We will, we will, we will go with Councilor Worrell next.
Thank you. First, I want to start by thanking everyone that's here to testify, but also want to thank Chair Robinson and the entire school committee for all your work on this F Y twenty-five budget. Also want to thank Boston Public Schools, especially Superintendent Skipper and the whole budget team for working with the council on the budget this year. Last week, I chaired the city council's Ways and Means committee working session on this year's budget. I was joined by every one of my fellow twelve counselors, along with Superintendent Skipper, interim CFO David Bloom and the budget team. We discussed topics including the S A C, school safety, enrollment issues, transportation, enrollment, and inclusive classroom process. As a council, after review, after reviewing this year's budget, we advocated for more reading specialists, a greater understanding of the city's long-term E L L plan, apply a pilot program to track bus ridership, making investments in initiatives that improve outcomes for Black and Latino boys, and an increase in sports funding. Also, an expansion of health and wellness days across the district and an increase in professional pathways in all of our upper schools in a pilot program for after-school tutoring. And there was a long list of even more proposed investments. I hope room for these ideas, especially the increased funding for sports, professional pathways, health and wellness days, and initiatives supporting Black and Latino boys can be found in this F Y twenty-five budget as we look forward to the final vote next week. We entered into this budget season in a spirit of collaboration with B P S as part of an effort to advocate early in the budget process for the issues that are important to our constituents. This was not a desire to usurp the school committee's power, but rather an attempt to make sure all the branches of city government are working together to ensure our students on this, on the path to success. As Ways and Means Chair, I hope this process has set a precedence for future collaboration on the budget and might allow the council a voice even earlier in the process in the years ahead. We all have what's best for our students in our hearts and our city works best when we work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Miss, Councilor Worrell. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Allison Doherty, followed by Sarah Fuller.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? Oh, oops. Okay, sorry. I literally just pulled into my driveway because I was at my I P T meeting late and my son is knocking on the window. Hold on. Okay, good evening, everybody. My name is Allison Dari. I am a special education teacher at Fenway High School and a Hyde Park resident. I am also a member of my inclusion planning team. I am speaking to you tonight from a different perspective of inclusivity or lack thereof in the Boston Public Schools. I teach students with a diagnosis, a diagnosis of autism. Currently, my students are in their transition phase, meaning they have completed their four years of academic work and they are now focused on their vocational and secondary school training opportunities. Two years ago, Governor Baker signed into law all state colleges and universities must open their campuses to students with disabilities, regardless if they graduated from high school or not. The Massachusetts Inclusive Concurrent Enrollment Initiative, M A C E, offers grants to college school partnerships to support public high school, school students with intellectual disabilities ages eighteen to twenty-two to, to increase their academic and career success by being included in a college or university community of learners. B P S has rolled out early college dual enrollment and year thirteen to help support our students in gaining college experiences, college credits, and success towards their college degree. However, with students with disabilities are only offered, they're only offered two seats for the entire district. I was told if my student wants to access this opportunity, Fenway High School must pay twelve hundred dollars for one semester. There are hundreds of districts in Massachusetts who are sending students to M A C E programs and is up to the leadership of B P S as to how many students they can send from the district. Currently in Boston Public Schools, there are many students who are eligible. However, they are only able to send two students because of lack of funding. I've been working with State Representative Consalvo's office to get to the bottom of this glaring injustice. We need to advocate for combining our state's early college initiative and our state's M A C E program to offer equity for our students with disabilities. Let's make access to college inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Sarah Fuller. Sarah Fuller, please raise your hand. If Sarah Fuller is not here, we will go with the next five, Amelia Mittelberg, Jessica De La Quila, Caponda Banks, Naomi Bones, and Joanne Medic. Amelia Mittelberg.
Hi, everyone. My name is Amelia Mittelberg. I teach K one at the O'Donnell School in East Boston. At my school, I'm the one K one teacher. There are two other K two teachers. And this fall, our inclusion planning team worked hard over many months to make a thoughtful plan to roll out inclusion. So next year, we will have a full-time learning specialist that is also assigned to these three early childhood classrooms in our first year of inclusion. Yeah, this winter, all three of our early childhood teachers were flagged for licensure issues because, by the district, because we do not have dual licensure with moderate disabilities. Our administrators at this time, multiple steps through the planning process throughout the winter, thoughtfully returned to our I P T and clarified, we have this learning specialist that's confirmed to support our early childhood classrooms. But then still, on March first, the day that jobs are posted in B P S, our team was flagged again. However, this time it was only our one provisional early childhood educator. So myself and another K two teacher on the team have been in B P S for years. We're permanent teachers. But this teacher is in her first year, so she's still provisional. And therefore, the district seems to have used this opportunity to now recode that teacher position to be a dual licensure role requiring moderate disabilities and the Gen Ed early childhood license. Also complicated by the fact that our school has seventy percent E L S. And so we already are moving towards dual licensure with E S L. So our question is what's going to happen then in year two of inclusion, let alone year ten? And I'm here today because I actually was feeling hopeful about the plan for the district the first time an inclusion happened. But we are already reverting away from creating strong teaching teams to support all of our learners in the same space and reverting back to just checking a box by having dual licensure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bart. Your time is up. Next speaker is, is Jessica De La Quila. Jessica De La Quila. Otherwise, we will go to Caponda Banks. Caponda Banks. Please turn on your camera. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Thank you.
We can do.
My name is Caponda Banks. I am a third grade teacher at the Curly K through eight in Jamaica Plain. I'm also the co-leader of the Inclusion and Right Committee. Previously, I was an A B A specialist at the Curly. The Curly K through eight consists of approximately nine hundred and thirty-five students and two hundred staff members. We have two sub-separate strands. We have an A B A strand and an S A R strand. We began our inclusion journey over ten years ago with the one point five teacher model. After years of trying to do what's right for our students, we came to the unequivocal understanding that this model did not work for our students. We needed two teacher teams. So when the district announced that the schools would convene I P T teams and propose, and we could propose budget plans to support students' needs, we were elated by this. During the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, our school was one of the first to submit inclusion plans. We met weekly for months to put this plan together. And we were told by the district that our plan reflected the needs of the students, but was a little too ambitious, for we had created a plan for inclusion for our entire school. So we revised our plan with a rollout across two years. For the first year, we got close to what our proposal requested and we were given the assurance by the district that we would be supported for the second rollout, rollout of our plan. But that's not what happened. This year, we resubmitted our plan for our other grade levels. And this time, instead of getting the staff allocation that we asked for, we were granted one point seven additional positions.
Thirty seconds.
One point seven. This is a tiny fraction of what is needed to successfully meet the needs of our students in the remaining grades. Our educators feel like we were duped, like we were let out into the deepest part of the ocean in a rowboat with one oar and now we're being told you're not getting the other oar. If the district truly wants to meet the needs of diverse students of all, diverse, meet the needs of all diverse students, it's essential that you listen to the experiences of your school staff and provide us with sufficient, sufficient teachers, paraphrash professionals.
Thank you very much, Ms. Banks. Thank you. Our next speaker is Joanne Medic, followed by Erin Devine. Joanne Medic. Please unmute and turn on your camera. Thank you.
Good evening.
It's all right. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Joanne Medic. I have been an early childhood teacher in Boston for the past nineteen years. For the last ten years, I've been at Allison Parks, working as a K zero and K two S E I inclusion teacher. I love my students and I love my families. This year, though, I have struggled more than ever before to meet the varied needs of my students. I am a strong and experienced teacher. I hold triple licensure in special education, E S L, and early childhood. Despite these facts, it's becoming increasingly challenging to provide strong tier-one instruction while at the same time working to meet the needs of my students with autism and other significant disabilities. significant disabilities. As the district moves towards full inclusion, the number of students requiring ABA services has increased in the inclusion setting. Our school does not have an ABA program, so the district contracts with outside agencies to provide the services each year, rather than giving us ABA specialists from the district. This year, our vendor is Treetop. Treetop has been short-staffed all year and has failed to provide the services required by our students' IEPs. This is not a new problem, but it is significantly worse this year. Failure to provide services violates students' rights and betrays our family's trust. We need district, ABA, and BCBA specialists who care about our students and are invested in their success. If we want the dream of full inclusion to succeed, we need to adequately and strategically staff our schools. It is impossible for one educator to do it all. We need a sufficient number of teachers, ABA, occupational inspectors.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is not here, Erin Devine. So we will go with May Stroud. The next ones are May Stroud, Karin Wilkerson, Megan Brownfield, and Ruby Reyes. May Stroud?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is May Stroud, and I'm a K-2 inclusion teacher at Bates Elementary. My concerns are based in our district's new inclusive education model, particularly in regards to the proposed increase in kindergarten class size from 20 to 22 students. Over the past seven years, our school has worked tirelessly to develop a successful inclusion model that caters to the diverse needs of all of our students. Our efforts have been recognized by both our community and the district for their positive impacts on student learning and well-being. It's disheartening to see that the review of our recent inclusion plan failed to acknowledge the unique needs and strengths of our school community. The district's one-size-fits-all approach to inclusion, including class size, overlooks the intricacies of our inclusive model and the resources essential for its sustainability. Moreover, the inclusion planning process itself was inefficient with a hasty review that wasted valuable time and resources without yielding meaningful outcomes for schools like ours. The required inclusion planning process took 13 people, 10 hours, and we received just three sentences in response, which essentially said, "You are a model for inclusion in the district, therefore, you get no additional resources." Despite the district's affirmation of our current performance and recommendation against altering our model, they are in fact proceeding with changes which pose significant risks to the well-being of our students. The decision to increase class size without providing additional resources will have immediate and profound repercussions, particularly for students with special needs and multilingual learners. With a larger class size, the individualized attention and support each child receives will diminish, putting the success of our inclusive learning environment at risk. I implore you to prioritize the well-being and academic success of our students by maintaining the current class size, ensuring that every child continues to receive the support and resources they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Karin Wilkerson.
Hi, my name is Karin Wilkinson, and I'm a science instructional coach. The B's Initiative, which stands for Building Excellent Educators of Science, was created in partnership with GE over four years ago, with the intention to transform science instruction across the district by building educator capacity, providing our teachers with standards-aligned curriculum, boosting content knowledge, and pedagogy required to bring rigorous, joyful learning. However, when GE's funding ended, so did the district's support of this work, which impacts 56 schools across nine regions and over 20,000 students in BPS. On February 16th, all 15 science coaches were accessed, leaving no science coaches for next year. From a science department survey sent to teachers in 2023, "Science teachers are requesting our services." 38% requesting science instructional coaching, 69% requesting professional learning around curricular materials. This is the work we're currently providing, and our work is not done. Boston is in its third year of the middle school rollout of Open Sied science curriculum, while simultaneously rolling out the high school Open Sied curriculum and field testing the elementary science curriculum. These coaches are essential to this work. We provide direct coaching. We provide professional learning. And we're currently conducting interviews for the science department to assess where we are in implementation and to plan professional learning for next year. When it comes to MCAS, 10 out of 15 B schools exceeded the district in science scores. We are asking to continue this work to improve science outcomes for BPS students, as in line with Mayor Wu's vision of increasing residences in life sciences. Boston Public Schools deserves an equitable path in these careers, and BPS needs seasoned, science-educated professionals to help create this path. We ask that the school committee allocate funds for science coaching positions for all regions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Megan Brownfield.
Hi, my name is Megan Roundsville, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a parent of a K-2 student at the Raphael Hernandez School, and I live in Dorchester. I'm a former co-chair of the Family Council at the Hernandez and an alumni of both the Hernandez and BPS. And I'm really motivated to come speak tonight because the Hernandez has sought from the district a budget to fund three learning specialists at the school, and the district has only provided 1.5. As a parent of a K-2 student, I have seen the importance of learning specialists for my child's learning in this dual-language context. The Hernandez, because of the level of the demand, had 25 students in my child's K-1 class with one teacher and one parent professional, some of the highest teacher-student ratios in the district. In this context, it is extremely difficult for the teacher and the parent to meet the variety of dual-language and inclusive learning needs in the classroom alone. My child greatly benefits from his learning specialist, because the learning specialist joins a class to help provide all children a healthy learning environment. Sometimes, what that means is sitting in circle time next to a child that's having a hard time staying still or playing an academic game with a student that needs a one-on-one moment of engagement during a center that's built for independent learning for five children to help enable the teaching environment with such high student ratios. These adjustments transform an environment that can hinder all children's learning environment, making it a stressful space and turning them into a joyful space or calm space that benefit all children's learning. In K-1, we also know that having sufficient learning specialists that were funded through ESAR funding has been working. The principal at the Hernandez has spent a lot of time to show statistics that these learning specialists have helped improve learning outcomes for all students and growth on tests for students with disabilities. The high population of English learners and growing population of students with IEPs is an intersection that represents some of the highest overall needs in the district, and I'm asking you to please fully fund the Hernandez's three FTE learning specialists. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes, and I'm the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. This year's budget process has been unsettling due to the combination of loss of ESAR, the inclusion rollout that unfunded proposals without explanation, and a murky shift from weighted student funding to something else that hasn't been explained. The reimagined school funding model acknowledged that weighted student funding is inequitable. However, basing a school's budget on their weighted student funding from the year prior is starting from a place of inequity and expecting different results. What is most evident is that there is no vision or push for infrastructure or equity. Schools that use ESAR funds for staff positions are going to feel the biggest cuts. However, these schools desperately needed these resources for years even before ESAR due to historical disinvestment and inequitable approaches to school funding. Those schools will desperately need those positions. Temporarily funding through ESAR was their only option. This budget does not address these schools with desperate needs to receive resources and staff. BESA demands a budget where students in schools with the greatest need are not harmed by funding baseline budget positions, including a full-time reading specialist in every school. Every classroom must be staffed by a team of educators to provide general education instruction, ESL instruction, specialized instruction, special education services, and social and emotional and behavioral health support for students, including our deaf and hard of hearing. And an alternative education programs as required by their individual needs and education plans. In addition, last year, Superintendent Skipper and Mayor Wu made very public comments to restorative justice, but only incorporated eight restorative justice coaches to carry out the type of programming that requires system-wide infrastructure. What happened to reimagining school funding to prevent schools and students with the highest needs from experiencing cuts? Where is the equity? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reyes. Next speaker. Next couple of speakers are Betsy Yoshimura, Holly Jordan, Bridget Fantini, and Eugenia Corbo. Betsy Yoshimura?
Sorry, yes, I am here. Did you... I thought I turned my... Okay, yeah. Hi. Hi. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to testify today. I am a mother of two students at the Mario Lumana Academy in East Boston. My younger daughter is in K-1, and my older daughter is in fourth grade. We had requested a few positions through the committee, and we were denied a bilingualist specialist, and we were also denied an instructional coach. And with the amount of... We've got 630 kids in our school. We're a dual-language school. We have 97.5% of our students are high-needs and 81.3% are low-income. And we have a high population of multilingual learners, students with disabilities, and multilingual learners with disabilities as well. And our, you know, in addition to our dual-language general ed. And having one instructional coach for the entire K-8 is not ideal. And I think if we really want to provide our students with a high-quality education, dual-language is fantastic, but we need to have the personnel and the staffing to properly provide the needs that our students have. And so, if you guys could work some magic and find some money for an additional instructional coach for the UMAI, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Holly Jordan.
Hi, my name is Holly Jordan, and I am the co-president of the School Parent Council at the Beethoven Orenberger School in West Roxbury. I am sure you're aware that the Beethoven Orenberger community is special. We are a K-8 school on two campuses. There are roughly 750 students from more than half of the neighborhoods in Boston. Nearly 13 positions across both campuses are being eliminated. Eliminating teachers and staff will decrease our ability to keep up our current rigor, harm what makes us unique, and threaten our Level 1 status, all of which our school has worked so hard to achieve. We are the only Level 1 school in Region 5. We have smaller class sizes and staff who are present when the need for social-emotional support or interventions arises. We can only maintain a Tier 1 status by staying vigilant and prepared for the needs of our community. There is an emerging mental health crisis, particularly in our young people, and we need an appropriate amount of staff to adequately meet this need. I recently learned that there has been a 37% increase in sexual misconduct claims across the district. I fear the statistics, with statistics like this, if they continue and rise, we won't... Excuse me. I fear statistics like this will continue and rise if we don't take a hard stand against removing the adults in the district that work directly with the students. To reduce staff now is not only unwise but unsafe. My fear is that all students, but particularly students of color, multilingual learners, and students with disabilities will be impacted so significantly that all the great work that we are planning and that you are planning will be marred with the potentially dangerous choices that could be prevented with more reflective planning. Perhaps the district could consider additional facility closures or other cost-saving measures, including...
Thank you very much, Ms. Jordan. Our next speaker is Bridget Fantini. Bridget Fantini?
Hi, my name is Bridget Hester Fantini. I'm a parent at JP Manning School.
Excuse me. Could you turn on your camera? Thank you.
Apologies. Thank you, Chair Robinson and Superintendent Skipper, for having us here tonight. The JP Manning School in Jamaica Plain has been held up as a model for inclusion for well over a decade. The new PPS model for inclusion was proposed for K-1 and 7th grade for FY '25. We don't have a 7th grade at the Manning, so that doesn't apply to us. But this new model that is being rolled out at the Manning is intended to impact all of our grades, K-0 through 6th. It's a dramatic shift for our elementary school. We've had amazing staffing to support MLL disabilities, Q4, Q3 over the years. And my personal concern is that there's not one teacher of color in the new model for the Manning that has been shared with parents and families, caregivers. And, you know, I would just respectfully ask the school committee to coordinate with BPS leadership to explain how this model is going to benefit all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Eugenia Corbo, has not signed in. So our next group of speakers will require interpretation support. If I can ask our Spanish interpreter? Celi Suazo, Sonia Medina, Ortenza Calderón, Simele Rodriguez Lamart, and Alejandra Quintanilla. Please raise your hands. Por favor, levanten sus manos. Gracias. And our Spanish interpreter? Is our Spanish interpreter available? Just a second. Our Spanish interpreter?
Yes, I'm here. Disculpe si no puedo repetir nuevamente.
Señor Celi Suazo puede comenzar.
Adelante, señora Suazo. Puede comenzar. Las escuadras iban pausando para que se le pueda interpretar.
Sí. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Celi Suazo y vivo en South Boston.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Celi Suazo. I live in the South Boston.
Mi hija asiste a la escuela Helly.
My daughter is going to the Helly School.
Gracias por la oportunidad.
And thank her very, very much for the opportunity.
La escuela Helly ha sido un gran soporte para la educación de mi hija.
The Hurley School has been a great support for my girl's education.
En estos momentos, mi hija está necesitando más ayuda de la escuela.
At this particular moment, my daughter is in need of more help from the school.
Y me enteré que por el presupuesto
And I'm aware because of budgetary constraints.
Tendrán que hacer recortes.
Some cuts will be implemented.
Me siento frustrada cuando escuché esta noticia.
So I am very frustrated after hearing this news of the cuts that will be implemented.
Estoy aquí para pedir al distrito que por favor no corten el presupuesto de la escuela Helly. Estoy aquí para pedir al distrito que por favor no corten el presupuesto de la escuela Helly.
I am here to specifically ask the district not to cut any budget, budgets from the Hurley Schools.
No puedo entender cómo el distrito está pro-promoviendo un plan de inclusión.
It is difficult to, for me to understand how the district is promoting an inclusion plan.
Dando tan poco presupuesto a la escuela Helly.
Given the fact that very little budgetary allocations are given to the Hurley Schools.
Estoy dentro de la escuela y me he dado cuenta la falta de personal que no hay y faltan para los estudiantes y maestros.
I've witnessed in person, been there at the school, of the lack of staff they do have for the students, the lack of teachers, that is.
Um, yo estoy trabajando en la escuela Helly como padre mentoras y los maestros y los niños están necesitando mucha ayuda.
I'm actually working there at the Hurley School as a parent mentor, and I do know that the kids are in great need of help.
Hay muchos niños que tienen IEP y el IEP y también necesitan ayudas especiales y lo, eh, para los maestros. Eso es muy fuerte para ellos, trabajar solos.
I do know that many of the kids are on individualized education plans or IEPs, and it is very difficult for the teachers to work by themselves because of the lack of staff.
Espero que te escuchen mi voz y no corten el presupuesto de la escuela de mi niña.
I do hope that my voice is being heard and that the no budgetary cuts are implemented at my girl's school.
Por favor, sean más conscientes de las necesidades que tienen nuestros niños y estudiantes.
Please, please be more conscious about the needs that our students have, our kids have.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias. Um, Sonia Medina is not signing to the meeting. Next speaker is Hortensia Calderón.
Señora Hortensia Calderón tiene la palabra usted. Adelante, por favor. Frases cortas para que se le pueda interpretar. Hortensia.
Señora Cortés Calderón, por favor, encienda su cámara y abra su micrófono.
Muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Uh, saludos Comité Escolar de las Escuelas Públicas de Boston.
Greetings to everybody, greetings to the school committee, public schools.
Mi nombre es Hortensia Calderón y vivo en Roxbury.
My name is Hortensia Calderón. I live in Roxbury.
Tengo dos nietas que asisten a la escuela Hurley.
I do have two granddaughters that they go to the Hurley Schools.
Mis nietas han tenido mucha suerte por estar en una escuela como la Hurley.
My granddaughters are very lucky to be at a school such as Hurley.
Ya que esta es una de las pocas escuelas bilingües que hay en el distrito educativo.
Provided that this is one of the few bilingual schools that are part of the educational district.
Mis nietas hablan y escriben muy bien el inglés y el español.
I have to point out as well that my granddaughters, they write and they speak very well, the both languages, English and Spanish.
El ejemplo de esta escuela debe servir de modelo inspirador.
So we have to say as well that this model that is implemented, there has to be, it is an inspirational model that has to be followed.
Para que el Distrito Educativo de Boston promueva la contratación de maestros bilingües.
So it is very critical that the district promotes the hiring of bilingual teachers.
Sin embargo, en la escuela Hurley
We have to point out as well that the Hurley School
Que ha sido considerada una de las escuelas modelos.
It's been actually considered one of the model schools.
Es triste lo que está pasando en estos momentos.
It is very sad what is happening at this particular moment.
Están poniendo a nuestra principal y al gobierno de la escuela
They actually have that the principal and the gubernatorial personnel at school
En una situación muy difícil.
In a situation that is in itself difficult.
Porque con el recorte presupuestario que está recibiendo
Provided that the budgetary, uh, cuts that are being allocated
Se están viendo obligados a tomar decisiones difíciles
They are in the position of making very difficult decisions.
Como recortar posiciones de maestros y paraprofesionales bilingües.
Such as cutting the different positions for teachers and bilingual personnel.
Quiero instar al distrito que por favor, su presupuesto.
I would like to, uh, ask the, uh, district to please do not cut any budgets.
Por ser una escuela con lenguaje dual
We have to consider that this particular school has a dual-language program.
Demanda tener más maestros bilingües y paradójicamente los están perdiendo.
Therefore, it demands in itself having more bilingual teachers and paradoxically, they are losing those bilingual teachers.
Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de expresarme.
Thank you very much to offer the opportunities you're giving me to express myself.
Muchas gracias. Next speaker is Simele Rodriguez Lamarche.
Señora Simele Rodriguez Lamarche tiene la palabra. Adelante.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Buenas tardes, Comité Escolar
Good afternoon.
Comité Escolar de las Escuelas Públicas de Boston y autoridades correspondientes.
Public schools and all the, uh, authorities that are related.
Mi nombre es Simele Rodriguez.
My name is Simele Rodriguez.
Vivo en la comunidad de Roxbury y mi hija asiste a la escuela Blackstone con un plan de educación individual.
I do live in the Roxbury community. My daughter, she goes to the Blackstone School and she has an individualized education plan.
Trabajo en un salón de clase de inclusión en primer grado.
I do work directly in a, uh, classroom, that is, an inclusion classroom, and that belongs to the first grade.
Me encuentro aquí como madre abogando para que mi escuela tenga más apoyo.
So I am here as a mother advocating for more support for that school.
Por los estudiantes con altas necesidades, que se les brinde a nuestros estudiantes un ambiente más seguro.
So those students that have high needs, it is important to provide an environment that is safer.
Con suficientes maestros y especialistas en los salones de clase, esto se logra con un presupuesto justo.
It's important to note that having enough teachers and enough specialists, there is no way to be able to do this unless we do have a fair budgetary allocation for this purpose.
Nuestra escuela se está viendo afectada en las últimas, eh, con la falta de personal.
Our school has been impacted and affected because of lack of staff.
La falta de recursos para estudiantes de educación especial.
And the lack of resources, that is, for the special education students.
La inestabilidad por los, por las renuncias y poca permanencia de los líderes.
And we have to point out as well the instability that is being caused because of the lack of presence of the leaders and the other practices that are having personnel not being present.
Yo cuento más de cinco principales de la Blackstone dentro de los últimos cinco años.
I have to point out that there has been more than five different principals over the five last years of the Blackstone School.
Qué destino le espera a nuestros estudiantes si no son tomados en cuenta con las decisiones que les impacta de forma negativa.
So what destiny are we hoping for the students if we are not considering those decisions that are having a negative impact in our students?
El distrito está promoviendo un plan de inclusión, pero no están tomando en cuenta a los estudiantes con altas necesidades especiales.
The district is in the process of implementing a, an inclusion plan, but they're not taking into consideration those students that have special needs.
No entiendo cuál es el
Treinta segundos, señora.
No, no entiendo cuál es el modelo de inclusión que está promoviendo.
It is very difficult, difficult for me to understand what is the inclusion model that they are promoting.
En la forma que están presentando el presupuesto, yo veo que están colocando fondos para contratar solo tres maestros.
So the way the budget is being allocated, it is my understanding that that budget is always sufficient for the hiring of three different teachers.
Tres maestros de inclusión, pero no son suficientes, tam, no son suficientes.
Three inclusion teachers, that is, but they are not, it is not enough, it's not sufficient.
También se necesitan más maestros bilingües, más profesionales en las escuelas Blackstone, hasta perdiendo posiciones.
We need more bilingual teachers. We'll need more personnel because, uh, actually, those positions are being lost.
Muchas gracias, señora Rodriguez. Next speaker is Alejandra Quintanilla.
Señora Alejandra Quintanilla tiene la palabra. Proceda, por favor.
Hola.
Good evening.
Um, muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad para expresarnos.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to express ourselves.
Yo soy madre de un niño que está en primer grado en la escuela Manning en Jamaica Plain.
I'm a mother of the kid that goes to the Manning School located in Jamaica Plain.
Hasta ahora nos hemos sentido muy afortunados.
So far, we have felt very fortunate.
Mi hijo es feliz yendo a la escuela y tiene mucha, muy buenas relaciones con los excelentes maestros que están ahí.
My son is very happy going to school and he has very good relations with the teachers that are there at that school.
Entiendo que la escuela Manning tiene un mo, tenía, bueno, espero que siga teniendo, un modelo particular de coenseñanza e inclusión que ha sido muy exitoso.
That is my understanding and I hope they continue doing so, having a model of, uh, co-teaching that has been very successful. I hope that that continues to be the case.
Um, pero me preocupan mucho los cambios que van a suceder, que parece van a suceder. Estamos muy confundidos al respecto.
So it is very concerning regarding the, uh, changes that are to be implemented. We are very confused about this, I have to say.
En el modelo actual, las clases de segundo a sexto grado tienen dos maestros.
So you have to point out as well that the present model, the, uh, grades between two and six, they only have two teachers.
Ah, pero eso es, es algo bueno que tengan, eh, es, 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 es un modelo de inclusión que ha sido muy exitoso. Lo que con el, los nuevos cortes van a quitar ese modelo.
It is a model that has been very successful up to the present time, but with the budgetary constraints, that model will not be functional any longer.
En vez de eso, habrá un conjunto de especialistas, eh, que estarán en varios, en varias clases.
So what they intend to have is a group of specialists that they will be at different classrooms.
Así como los, eh, los padres que han hablado, no entiendo cómo este modelo es mejor para nuestros estudiantes.
Replicated as what the other parents have said in their testimony, I do not understand how this particular model is beneficial to our students.
Hay menos, eh, maestros por estudiantes.
We have to say that the ratio of teachers per student is, uh, lower and it's being minimized.
No entiendo cómo esto será más inclusivo, no entiendo cómo esto va a servir cuando haya más estudiantes que requieran apoyo, eh, para el idioma inglés.
I do not understand that, this, how this particular model of inclusion is going to work, but considering in particular that there will be more students that will be in need as well of the language access.
Creo que siendo que la Manning había sido tan exitosa, sería más bien un modelo que debía replicarse en otras escuelas, en vez de desmantelarlo.
We have to point out as well that considering the success that this particular model has at the Manning School, instead of replicating or mimicking this model, they're trying to dismantle this model.
Así que, por favor, les pido, involucran a los padres y a los maestros de las escuelas antes de hacer cambios drásticos.
So please, uh, one particular request that I do have involve the parents, involve the teachers before implementing any drastic changes.
Entiendo que
Yeah, se la acabó su tiempo, señora.
No, no, treinta segundos.
Treinta segundos.
Ah, bueno, eh, entiendo que no somos la única escuela que creó un plan IEP, IEP que no fue tomado en cuenta. Así que solo, les doy las gracias por escucharme, pero también despido, involuquen a los padres y a los maestros y explíquenos los cambios que van a hacer.
So we do understand that, actually, we are not the only school that has suggested an IEP, an individualized education plan that was not implemented. So again, as I say, please involve the students and the parents and the teachers in this particular model.
Gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next group of speakers are Janina Tillman, Danielle Drinkman, Ikram Hamadi, Uleka Toto, and Erin Burbingham Anadu. Janina Tillman.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is
Could you please turn on your camera?
Oh, is my camera, my camera not on?
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Janina Tillman. I have two kids in the Boston School Public, in the public schools. Um, my young one is in the Roger Club and my older one is in Snowden International. Now, I've been blessed to get my child into the Roger Club School. They actually have a really good inclusion plan. Um, and I've actually seen other schools come and watch our schooling to model their school after ours. So it's very, very stressful to hear that the funding is going to be cut for the school and those cuts will impact the parent mentoring program, the gym program, the music program, arts, and the extra cha, the extra teachers in each classroom. What I'm here to tell you people is stop cutting funding to Roger Club because the way we have things, it works and it's going well. If you give us the funds, we can show you what our students can do. We can show you what we are capable of. The cuts across the board of every school on every level should not be happening right now. We are in a crucial, we are in a crucial moment where we have to make sure our generations are properly educated so they can take the future reins. I am deeply, I'm deeply hurt that funding is going to be taken from everywhere that matters. It's, it, everything matters, everything extra matters. So we're finally getting to a place where we see some light and we can see some things that are working. And now you're going to say, oh, no, we're going to cut it. That's so unfair. It's unfair to our next generation. Think of the fact that they're going to be coming up behind us. Don't we care about our future?
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Drinkman.
Hi, is it my turn to talk? Sorry.
Yes, it's your turn. Thank you.
Great. Um, hi, I'm Danielle. I live in Jamaica Plain. I'm the mother of a K-one student at the Hernandez's. Um, you know, thank you for letting us voice our concerns today. I'm not as organized as I planned because my one-year-old is sick, but, you know, I, I think a lot of the testimony today has been about funding the additional staff in particular. And I think we've heard a few people from dual-language schools. So I think that's, you know, in general, a broad reach to ask, you know, to, to increase funding for, for these things. But particularly for the Hernandez School, um, we are looking for funding for the learning specialists. So we had requested three and are only getting funding for one and a half. Um, this is something that the school had funded using, you know, the special COVID money. So other schools got computers, hard things that they could keep for years. We knew we needed these learning specialists, so that's what we got, and now we're losing them. And, you know, I don't even have a child with an IEP, but she's directly interacted with the learning specialist for her grade. You know, he's helped her because pretty much the entire school is secondary languages, right? Either, most of the students either speak Spanish or either speak English, and they're going to need help in one of them. So we especially have a high need for these additional specialized learning language, specialized learning assistants. It's been working. We don't want to see this lose, um, the gains we've made. It's going to be hard for us to get the staffing back, you know, years down the line when they finally decide to give us this funding again because, you know, we're looking for people that are dual-language. you know, we're looking for people that are dual-language, it's not the easiest thing to fill. It's working for the people with disabilities, you know, on a personal level, it's working even for the entire classroom, allowing everyone to get the extra help they need. And it's just, you know...
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks. Next speaker is Ikram Hamadi, who will need support within Arabic interpretation. Could our Arabic interpreter please help us?
Yes, yes, Dana.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ikram Hamadi, if there is a place, eh, open the camera and talk.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Please.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Ikram Hamadi, I live in Southend.
If there is a place to teach small places.
Okay. My name is Ikram Hamadi. I live in Southend.
I live in Southend, Boston.
And my three kids are students in Blackstone School. Today, I'm here to raise my voice in behalf of the students who are in ESL classes. I like that our school have a good budget. To give more support to ELL students. I work in this school. And I see more and more students joining this school. And they were received very good in this school. But unfortunately, I don't see that they have the resources from education people and other resources which can help in this aspect. And also the subjects that those kids can get good education. I want to know exactly where the budget for ELL goes. Like a mother. I want to know if there is any money for the resources and the education facilities that can help ELL students in their education. Also. I worked in Blackstone for two years. And what caught my attention. That we have a swimming pool in this school. And I didn't see that it was used. And I want to know the reason for having the swimming pool in this school. And what caught my attention also. That the building for Blackstone School is very old. So, uh, my question is, when the school will be rebuilt? Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Our next speakers are Suleka Soto, Erin Birmingham Anadu, Alisa Krieger, and Joy Harms. Please raise your hands.
Hi, good evening. My name is Suleka Soto and I just want to say that I stand in solidarity with all of the parents advocating for the Blackstone. I was a Blackstone parent for 10 years and I really understand where they're coming from. After so many years of fighting for a new building. So my name is Suleka Soto and I am an immigrant from the Dominican Republic and a proud parent and graduate of Boston Public Schools. I am here before you to advocate for the preservation and enhancement of bilingual or dual-language education in our schools. Bilingual education in BPS was instrumental in my success story. With the guidance of an inspiring educator, Ms. Fuentes, and Afro-Latina like myself, I mastered English while preserving my cultural identity as a Dominican and my native language. Research shows that bilingualism enhances cognitive skills and academic outcomes, and I am living proof of its effectiveness. However, since the lookback of 2017, there has been a limited expansion of bilingual programs like BPS promised in the previous years. Moreover, the threat of budget cuts puts the progress and sustainability of these programs at risk. We must prioritize allocating resources to support their growth and broaden offerings to reflect the student diversity. This will allow more BPS students to earn the Massachusetts State Seal of Literacy, which recognizes high school graduates proficient in English and another language. It values the assets of English-language learner students and respecting their native language and culture. In addition, we need to focus on hiring, retaining culturally representative educators, like the one I had, and enhance family and community involvement and educational decisions about Title I spending.
Thank you very much, Ms. Soto.
Please increase the budget for bilingual education.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Birmingham Anadu. Please touch.
My name is Erin Birmingham Anadu and my family lives in Rosendale, our daughter is at the Manning School. Just this morning, I had the pleasure of attending an assembly where our son was recognized for seventh-grade honor roll. Last week, he was recognized by DESSY for exceptional performance on his 2023 MCAS exams. They even gave him a Target gift card. We're so proud. He's young, gifted, and black, and he has worked very hard for his success. Our son began at the Manning on an IEP when he was just three years old, nearly non-verbal. The staff, teachers, and true inclusion model of the school built a foundation for his success. As I have said before, I am eternally grateful to BPS and the Manning for this. I was here two months ago testifying about new concerns at our school and my concerns have come true. Our librarian of 23 years is being cut, our music teacher is being cut, our entire co-teaching model is being cut. Principal Allison Hart is not even doing a gradual rollout as described in the district inclusion ed plan against the school IPT team, she's scrapping the model as a whole starting this fall. There was no community engagement on the new model. Any explanations provided have been botched and confusing with zero evidence that the new model will work for anybody, let alone MLLs, students of colors, or students on IEPs. There is an utter void of leadership at our school. Teachers have voiced concern to caregivers, the BTU, and even unanimously voted no confidence in Principal Hart. The school climate survey shows an 8% approval rating, one of the lowest in the district. As caregivers, we don't know. The Manning is a DESSY school of recognition and student test scores across, student test scores across sectors supersede district averages, especially with students on IEPs. The Manning should be a template for inclusion, not its next teardown. Superintendent Skipper, Mary Wu, why are you taking away our teachers? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alisa Krieger. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Alisa Krieger, I am a parent of a K2 student at the Hernandez, I live in Rosendale. I'm here also to ask for the three learning specialist positions to be fully funded at the Hernandez. As a couple of people have already said, with all of the students learning two languages, there's so much need. I think you've heard a lot of the reasoning, but I just wanted to say that last year was a really hard year for my son, he doesn't have an IEP, he's, you know, like, doesn't have a specific need, but he really struggled last year. And the learning specialists at the Hernandez really turned it around for him, and I think it's hard because at the Hernandez, these are like people who work there, who are part of the community, who fit in the system and who know everybody. And taking those positions away only to rehire them later doesn't make any sense. When we reached out to the school because our son was struggling, he was, didn't want to go to school, he hated it, he was getting in trouble all the time. We met with Carlos, who is the learning specialist for, who was the learning specialist for K1, and we sat down with him and we sat down with my son's teachers and we made a plan together. And I was like, okay, cool, like, make a plan, whatever, but the, the change happened. So immediately when the plan that Carlos put together, like, the change is immediate. My son loved going to school, he was doing really well, and those positions are invaluable, and taking them away and hiring them later is unacceptable because they're not just positions, those are people who are part of a really valuable community and they make a huge difference, not only for the kids with IEPs, but for all the kids, and they're just really important and we need them, so thank you for the time.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Krieger. Next speaker is Joy Harms and then Sarah Fuller.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Joy Harms. I live in West Roxbury and I'm the mother of four daughters who have attended or currently attend Manning Elementary School. And the testimony of these other mothers and caregivers here, I'm sorry, I'm just getting emotional with you because this is, this underscores the importance of what's happening and, and the dire need for our children's educations. My oldest daughter has enrolled in the Manning 10 years ago. We are pleased to discover a community of learners with a wide range of gifts and challenges and teaching staff that can help each child thrive in that environment. Our school was an early adopter of both full-inclusion programs and the extended day schedule, and parents, educators, and leaders were always asking, how can we make this even better? We at the Manning were recently presented with an upcoming staffing model that appears to be the opposite of that question and instead asked the question, how can we do this cheaper? This frankly makes me very concerned for the educational future of my daughters that are still at the school. It's been very obvious over the years that the successes that we saw were due to having multiple trained teachers in the classroom. My daughters over the years have come home with anecdotes of classmates who were having rough days. As a result, those teachers had to engage in physical holds for student safety, remove the class from the classroom, and other interventions that prevented them from actually teaching. Learning only happened because the other classroom teacher stepped in and continued the lesson. Our inclusion model works because there are two fully certified teachers in most classrooms. Learning does not have to come to a halt because a classmate is having a rough day. The model presented to us at the Manning reduces the classroom teachers to one teacher per classroom with shared learning specialists and prior professionals that spend only a fraction of the school day in the classroom. This model also results in the loss of our music teacher, our librarian, and experienced teachers who know how to help all students thrive in an inclusion setting. Our school does not need fewer fully licensed teachers in the classroom, it doesn't need fewer experienced special teachers, we need more.
Thank you, Ms. Harms. Thank you. Our last speaker is Sarah Fuller.
Hi, my name is Sarah Fuller and I'd like to say good evening to members of the school committee, superintendent Skipper, and any others who are on Zoom. Like I said, my name is Sarah Fuller, I live in Boston, in Charlestown, and I've been a special education teacher in BPS for 20 years. Currently, I work at the Blackstone Elementary School as an inclusion specialist and I am the facilitator of their inclusion planning team. I also have two children who attend Boston Public Schools. I am here because we have concerns about our inclusive education plan as well as the IPT process in general. I wrote this with members of our IPT team, so I'm just reading, reading from what we wrote. Initially, our IPT was very excited about the district's proposal to create inclusive schools throughout the district. Our team worked very hard to create inclusive classrooms for our K0 to K2 communities. Our vision identifies multilingual learners in students in substantially separate classrooms as our most segregated populations. We agreed we wanted to desegregate our sheltered English immersion classrooms to create inclusive classrooms. We thoughtfully looked at the staff we had and identified positions we would need. About one to two months prior to our plan's due date, we were told we could not include additional staffing in our request. Okay, that was really quick. And so at this time, this is very important, our plan was not approved, we were told that we should be programming a transitional bilingual education plan, which, you know, a few weeks later, we were told, nope, that's not going to be the plan at your school. And as of today, we still do not know what our programming will be for our SEI students.
Thank you, Ms. Fuller. That concludes public testimony for the budget hearing. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Pravik. I want to thank everyone who spoke tonight. Your input is critical as we consider the superintendent's budget recommendations for fiscal year '24. I want to remind everyone that all budget documents are available online at bostonpublicschools.org/budget. You can email your comments to budget@bostonpublicschools.org as well as the school committee. There's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this budget hearing and immediately convene our regular school committee meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you, we'll move right into tonight's school committee meeting. We'll begin with the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the February 28th, 2024 school committee meeting and March 24th, 2024's fiscal year '25 budget hearing as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing done, Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, we'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Good evening to the committee and thank you, Chair Robinson. I wanted to start with an update on our capital planning. BPS capital planning team hosted the fourth and final community engagement. BPS Capital Planning Team hosted the fourth and final Community Engagement Public Workshop on the Long Term Facilities Plan at the Bowling Building. The meetings were attended by a total of 203 individuals. Last week's meeting particularly focused on high schools. I really enjoyed hearing the feedback from all of the participants, but I especially enjoyed hearing the feedback from the students as they use the tools to look through the data and they really learn about their school, but also all schools. The Capital Planning Team also joined the Boston Student Advisory Council, which we call BSAC, earlier this month and conducted a version of the workshop with, with the students there to gather their input on the district's long-term facilities plan. We're especially grateful to the dozens of high school students, including BSAC members and those who came to the high schools workshops and shared their thoughts and their experiences about how our school buildings must change to be more equitable and inclusive. We even had a student who attended all four of the workshops. The team right now is synthesizing the input that they received, the feedback from the four workshops and the BSAC meeting, as well as the community survey that was disseminated in February and March. This analysis will be shared with the school committee members once it's compiled and analyzed, and that will happen soon. Quick update on our new arrivals. On Monday, the Office of Family and Community Advancement Welcome Services Team was led by Chief Magali Sanchez and Senior Director Sonia Gomez Banre. In collaboration with the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education, which we call OM, welcomed additional students and their families who are currently staying at the Farnsworth Shelter in the Seaport. The team provided a full day of registration, assessment and enrollment for students, which also included breakfast and lunch. Parents and students also chose clothing, shoes, toiletries, as well as other basic necessities from the donation drive that's been, that's been led by Francisca Borders of the Office of Family and Community Advancement. To date, for the committee's knowledge, we have enrolled 118 students from the Mass Cast Temporary Shelter. The team continues to do a wonderful job welcoming and supporting our new families and students. And most importantly, they are really getting our students into school as quickly as possible so that they can join their learning communities. Last week, BPS joined the Center to Support Immigrants organizing its Equity Now and Beyond Wellness Fair at the Bowling Building where our newcomer families received a variety of health and wellness resources, including COVID testing and PPE supplies, blood pressure screenings, onsite health insurance enrollment and more. Thanks to the Welcome Services Team, Community Engagement Team, the BPS Helpline and the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education and really all of the other BPS departments who helped to make this event a success and continue to support our newly arrived families. Last week, I had the pleasure of being interviewed about my job of being superintendent by a very curious group of Harvard Kent Elementary students in the fifth grade. This was led by teacher Maura McDonough, students in, in what's called the Careers in the Community Enrichment Class, where they're introduced to different careers and to be kind of inspired and become leaders in their own community. The students were really curious. They asked great questions. They shared with me what their interests were inside and outside of school. I just want to thank the students, but also especially Ms. McDonough for offering such an awesome opportunity for our students to learn about different careers, meet different people and for inviting me to be part of her class. Earlier this month, I had the pleasure of joining BPS Social Workers at their professional development, which was a kickoff for the National School Social Work Week, Social Worker Week. And this was really a celebration kicking off Social Worker Month nationally. The theme of this year was empowering social workers, inspiring action and leading change. Social workers, as we know, are agents of change. They're within our schools, within our communities. And I'm so grateful for the work that they do every day in our schools to care for and empower our students and our families and support staff. Having social workers in all of our schools has never been more important or more necessary than it is today. And this year, we're able to say that we have at least one social worker in every school, a goal we had set as a department more than four years ago. I want to recognize interim chief of, or sorry, chief of student support Cory McCarthy, director of social worker Jenna Arafinzic, who I just can't say enough about her work and support of her team and really their entire student support team for the hard work and dedication to the needs of our students. This morning, I joined Mayor Wu and the Boston Public Health Commission and other partners at the Joseph Lee K eight school in Dorchester to announce $21 million in funding from the city to support mental and behavioral health programs and services to support youth and families. These investments are part of the city's response to the need for more mental health supports as well as addressing behavioral health workforce shortages and a lack of availability to culturally competent care. These investments over the next three years will directly impact 21 BPS schools, assist up to 5,300 students at all grade levels, support 292 people in pursuing behavioral healthcare careers in Boston and provide more than 1,000 people with behavioral health training to better serve youth and families in Boston. And before the event, we had the opportunity to do a roundtable led by Dr. Simone from the Boston Health Commission with a group of students. And they were very articulate in talking about who they go to when they need support. And that really ranged from social workers to teachers to other trusted adults in the buildings and how valuable that is for them, given all the pandemic has meant for our students and all the return from the pandemic has meant for our students. So we're very grateful for this additional resource and we're looking forward to working with the city as we implement. BPS and Mayor Wu kicked off the 30th Annual Youth Arts Month Celebration on March 9th at Boston City Hall where more than 300 pieces of art from 24 schools are now on display through the end of May, through the end of March. I encourage you to walk around the building if you have the opportunity during business hours. The artwork not only showcases the immense talents of our students, but the artwork also speaks to the high quality of the arts instruction by our teachers in our schools. So great job to all the participating artists and to our art staff. I'm so proud to share that Winship Elementary School fifth grader Tanoshi Inomata, an 11-year-old from Alston, will go on the Scripps National Spelling Bee Trip in Washington DC in May. Tanoshi was declared the winner of the 16th Annual Boston Centers for Youth and Families Citywide Spelling Bee on Saturday, March 16th for correctly spelling the winning word, cornia. Tanoshi was one of 23 Boston youth and 14 BPS students competing in the spelling bee and will be rooting Tanoshi on as, you know, in the, in the next phase. Early this month, I joined Mayor Wu, Chair Robinson and Vice Chair O'Neill, the city's Public Facilities Department, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, which is MSBA, and members of the BPS Leadership Team at the topping off ceremony for the new William E. Carter School in the South End, district school dedicated to students who need individualized intensive education programming. It was an awesome event. Everyone's spirits were high despite the rain and the cold. I'm always inspired by the students at the Carter and by the commitment and dedication of school leader Mark O'Connor and his entire staff. The new Carter building will include more classrooms, a new early childhood program, pre-K to 12 pathway, a therapeutic pool and a sensory garden. We're so excited to see this building near completion and look forward to students and staff returning in the fall of 2025. And finally, in sports, it was a huge weekend for high school basketball, boys' basketball and hockey. Three BPS schools brought home state championship titles. On Saturday, March 16th, New Mission and Charlestown High School, boys' basketball teams won their respective divisions at the Songus Center in UMass Lowell. Sea Town clinched the Division Three title with their 61 to 40 victory over Old Rochester. The New Mission Titans beat Husick Valley 57 to 49 in the Division Five contest. And on March, and on Sunday, March 17th, St. Patty's Day, the Boston Latin School Boys Varsity Hockey Team won the Division Two State Championship at the Boston Garden. Late night, but a great night. It started two hours late and they played until well after 11 o'clock, but it was electrifying and the hometown crowd was ecstatic. And BLS was able to beat Tewksbury 4 to 2. This is a Wolfpack Hockey's first state championship since 2005. Congratulations to all of our student athletes everywhere in the district and especially for our championship teams on an incredible season. We're so proud of you. And I want to thank BPS Athletics Director Avery Esdale, his entire team and our athletic coaches with their dedication and commitment to BPS students. Lengthy but full of some really good news, Chair. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Now, I will now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. I'd like to remind my colleagues about our agreed upon norm that we each have five minutes. That's one to two questions and I would like to remind BPS staff to also be brief in your responses. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you. Questions, comments? None. Superintendent, I would like to talk a little bit about our student member who I think has some good news to share with us. That wasn't in your report, so I'm going to allow him to share that news himself.
Excellent.
Mr. Mehta, would you like to share your exciting news?
Okay, yeah, I guess, sure. I ended up getting a full ride to Northeastern.
Do you want to say any more about it?
I guess that's it.
What about your, what else you got as part of getting your acceptance? That's all you want to share right now? Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we wanted to say great congratulations to Diego. When I spoke to him on Sunday, I have never seen him more elated about this accomplishment. So we know that Northeastern's really great to have you and that you'll do a great job there. Great, thank you. Right. Congratulations. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, I mean, I think mostly I just wanted to extend congratulations to all the teams. Definitely to you, Diego. That's, you know, not to be understated. Going to college for free is never, is, it's, that's, I mean, you could take it from, I would say, a generation of millennials that, that is, you know, never to be underestimated. So certainly, congratulations to you and congratulations to the district for a lot of their accomplishments. And I look forward to the, the discussion later on this evening.
Are there any more comments before we move on? Well, thank you, everyone. There's no objection. We'll close out this discussion. And I'll now entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there any objection or discussion to the motion? Hearing done, Ms. Parvex. Will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex. We'll now move on to the discussion about the appointment of Nina Parvex as Executive Secretary to the Boston School Committee. As I've shared with the committee, I'm recommending the appointment of Ms. Parvex as the Executive Secretary for the Boston School Committee. Ms. Sullivan served our body with great distinction for 16 years. For seven of those 16 years, Ms. Parvex worked side by side with her, playing a critical role supporting our regular school committee, our regular meetings and school committee task forces. When we went remote, it was Ms. Parvex who worked tirelessly with the district's technology department to learn how to implement this new technology and ensure our meetings ran smoothly and were fully accessible for any member of our community. Ms. Parvex has the knowledge, skills and experience to serve as our next Executive Secretary. We will take further action on this later in the evening, but I will now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Mr. O'Neill?
Madam Chair, not a, not a question, but just wanted to speak in support of this as well. Ms. Parvex has, has been with us for a number of years and Ms. Parvex, if I remember correctly, you're, I believe you have a degree in library sciences and I know you've also been doing an effort to digitize all the policies of the school committee and have worked with Mass Association of School Committees on that as well. So thank you for the work that you have done. A lot of the public haven't seen you, but the, we have because you've been very much behind the scenes in these meetings working with Ms. Sullivan. And so look good forward to you taking the next step. And, and so thank you, Chair, for your recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Parvex?
Thank you. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. This meeting would feature only one public comment period of, we have, we, sorry. We have 22 speakers this evening. Each person will have two minutes to speak and I will remind you when you have 30 seconds remaining. If your remarks are longer than two minutes, please email your comments for distribution to the committee. The time that an interpreter uses for English interpretation will not be deducted from a speaker's allotted time. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. Please state your name, affiliation and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. We will begin with John Mudd, Mike Eichmann, Jake Dempsey and Vidi Karwell. John Mudd? We can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. My name is John Mudd. I'm a resident of Cambridge and a longtime education advocate in Boston. I'm sorry to say, but I I'm sorry to say, but I feel compelled to say that I don't think the school committee is fulfilling its responsibility to establish education goals and policies and to exercise its fiscal responsibility in adopting a budget. We are told the school committee will approve a general fund budget showing an increase of over two hundred twenty staff positions, while at the same time, the committee has given documentation that in fact, when all funds are accounted for, including the end of ESER, the district will suffer a loss of three hundred thirty-nine positions. I've earlier testified about the very large personnel shifts among programs in the all-funds budget. What are the specific programmatic implications of these changes in English learners' general education, special education, and their projected impact on student outcomes? You should ask for this before approving the budget. Many of these changes are a result of the district's Inclusionary Education Plan. This plan reflects a major transformation in education policy. The school committee has the responsibility to establish education policy, yet it did not give prior approval to this new policy before it was sent to the state. The evidence says it is the wrong policy for English learners. You can still stop its implementation for English learners. The same is true of the long-term facilities plan. The committee says it wants authentic parent and community engagement on facilities proposals, but you're allowing a plan to be implemented in which it is not clear that the district must bring specific proposals to parents and stakeholders before they are presented to you. And the timetable in the plan states that these proposals are supposed to be approved by you before the end of April this year. Change this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Heisman.
Mike Heisman, Beja, Dorchester. The BPS strategic vision begins with, at BPS, every child in every classroom is entitled to an equitable, world-class, high-quality education. This proposed budget does not support your vision. Your reimagined school funding steering committee recommends fully fund resource needed for students with disabilities and multilingual learners first at every school. Ensure a baseline of funded resources at all schools. This is not what this budget proposes. Many of our children attend under-resourced and substandard school facilities. Too often, conditions are deplorable. Your budget proposes to continue this abuse and neglect. This is a painful austerity budget proposal. The community needs an authentic facilities plan. Instead, you plan to steamroll over community opposition and closed schools. We need a budget that would make major investments in expanding successful programs like community schools and ethics studies. You should defund the policing of our schools and instead make major increases in restorative justice. Stop inclusion done poorly and cheaply and instead fully fund inclusion done right. Invest in programs so that our children will graduate with both the high-level fluency in both English and a second language. Spend much less money and lawsuits. The O'Brien community has shown us that when we unite and fight, we can win. We must unite and fight against this horrific proposal by Mayor Wu and Superintendent Skipper. Listen to what people have testified today. This is a painful, painful budget proposal. Lena, congratulations on your position. You've done a wonderful job. Good luck to you, sister. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Heisman. Next speaker is Jake Dempsey.
Hello, everyone can hear me?
Yes, can you?
My name's Jake Dempsey and I'm a parent at The Gardener. Superintendent Skipper, I am here to address the lack of transparency and inaccurate statements that you and your leadership team have made regarding the investigation into and dismissals of Principal Erica Herman and Assistant Principal Joe Sarr of The Gardener Pilot Academy. When you spoke to the governing board in February, you told us that the investigation was launched due to multiple staff and parents coming to the district with concerns. A statement also echoed by Christine Landry and Drew Eccleson. However, in the report that justifies the firing of Principal Herman states the investigation was started solely because the Office of Equity raised concerns that four incidents were reported late. There is no mention of families contacting the district. You also told us that Mr. Sarr was restricted because of his inaction regarding an incident with a staff member. But I have since learned that Mr. Sarr did indeed contact DCF multiple times, spoke with families and asked school leadership for guidance on the incident. Repeatedly, parents were told that egregious code of conduct violations were unreported and unaddressed. If you had spoken to Mrs. Herman and Mr. Sarr, you would know that these incidents were addressed. Whether and how they were reported is worthy of a conversation, but does not justify the slandering and firing of two committed educators. Throughout this exhausting process, parents were told again and again that our positive experiences with Mrs. Herman and Mr. Sarr were not universal and that the district was acting at the behest of parents. To hear this wasn't accurate is infuriating. When you spoke to the board, I felt you were being very transparent with us. Now that you know that some of the statements you made were not accurate, I implore you to go back to the records and dig deeper than your investigator did. The parents of GPA are not satisfied and we are not going away. I have more questions and will be back to ask them.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Virica Rowell. Ms. Rowell is not in the meeting, so next speaker, the next group of speakers will be Albania Orozco, Jacqueline Rodriguez, Sonia Medina and Zimel Rodriguez Lamart. Next speaker will be Albania Orozco.
Hello, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Albania Orozco. Soy de Dorchester. Tengo una niña nueve años que asiste a la escuela Op Academy, Dorchester. Y mi comentario es acerca...
Uh, usted pidió intérprete?
Yes, sí.
Could we please have an interpreter support the speaker?
Puede empezar, por favor?
Okay. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Albania Orozco. Soy del vecindario de Dorchester. Tengo una niña nueve años que asiste a la escuela Op Academy, Dorchester. Mi comentario es acerca...
Uh, puede parar, por favor. Disculpe. Por frases. Gracias. Uh, my, hello, good evening. My name is Albania Orozco. And I have a nine-year-old kid who goes to the Op Academy and I am also from the Dorchester neighborhood.
Mi comentario es acerca de la escuela. El excelente trabajo que están haciendo todo el equipo.
And my comment is about the excellent job that the whole team is doing at the school.
Y decir que, por favor, cada ayuda que la escuela necesita que se la brinde porque esa escuela necesita ayuda está haciendo un excelente trabajo con cada niño.
And also I have to say that, please, whatever resource that the school is asking for, please give it to them because the school is doing an amazing job with every student.
La escuela en sí necesita también mucha atención en teacher que sean bilingües, ya que casi todos los teachers hablan solamente en inglés y la mayoría del estudiante habla en español y criolca o beliano.
Also, the school needs, the district needs to pay attention to this school. They need more bilingual teachers because most of the students in this school speak Spanish and most of the teachers only speak English.
Es una escuela que está haciendo un buen trabajo y necesita más ayuda. Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
It's a school that is doing a good job and needs a lot of help. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Muchas gracias. Next speaker is Jacqueline Rodriguez. Jacqueline Rodriguez, are you in attendance? Please raise your hand. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Greetings, Superintendent Skipper and school psychology and, and school committee members. I'm Dr. Jacqueline Rodriguez, bilingual school psychologist, have worked in BPS for twenty-three years, seven years at the Charles Sumner Elementary School. School psychologists are facing cuts, possible cuts in positions due to the loss of our funds. I'm losing one day at my school next year, a school of six hundred, over six hundred. There are sixteen bilingual, English and Spanish-speaking school psychologists in Boston, but that is not enough for our students and our families. In order to recruit and retain school psychologists, I propose offering a differential such as that used by the Department of Mental Health. I emailed that language to Ms. Parvee earlier. Currently, bilingual school psychologists can actually stop being bilingual according to the BTU contract on page seventy-nine, also emailed, due to our unmanageable workload. Our students and families need us to remain bilingual. Having school psychologists who speak the languages of our families is a strength and something that is in danger of disappearing as we face a loss of positions. I was asked to translate three times yesterday at my school. I was, we are asked to do more without any kind of differential. BPS can no longer rely on the goodwill of my colleagues to ensure families and students get what they need. BPS needs to fairly compensate bilingual school psychologists for our skill set and not encourage us to stop being bilingual, as that does not serve our students and families. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Daniel Noemi Boynomah. And we will need a Spanish interpreter for the next two speakers. Thank you. Daniel Noemi Boynomah, si está lista para empezar?
Uh, un momento. Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Daniel. Soy inmigrante latinoamericano y orgulloso padre de un niño en segundo grado y una niña en primer grado en el JP Manning de Jamaica Plain.
Good evening. My name is Dan, Daniel, and I'm a proud immigrant from Latin America. Have a kid in first grade and a second grade in the, ¿en qué escuela?
El JP Manning.
J, in JP Manning.
Muchas gracias por esta posibilidad de poder plantear mi preocupación por los cambios que se quieren hacer al modelo de enseñanza de nuestra escuela.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about this new model that they want to implement in the teaching of our schools.
Por mucho tiempo, el Manning ha sido una escuela de inclusión total y el modelo de coenseñanza, de co-teaching, ha sido reconocidamente exitoso.
Um, and for a lot of time, the Manning School has been a model school with this co-teaching model and it has been a successful model.
El año pasado, el Manning fue una de las solo cuatro escuelas en BPS que el estado de Massachusetts designó como Escuela con Reconocimientos, School of Recognition, el ranking más alto que el estado puede otorgar.
Last year, the Manning was one of the four schools in the state that had the School of Recognition, which is the highest recognition a school can get in the state.
Nuestro modelo de inclusión ha sido con co-teaching para los grados dos a seis. Esto quiere decir dos profesores y un ayudante, un para en cada sala de clases.
This, uh, this inclusion model, it's been a model of co-teachers. This from, uh, grades sixth, second to sixth. This means two teachers and a paraprofessional in each classroom.
El, el modelo no es para nada perfecto, pero sin dudas puede ser mejorado, pero los cambios que plantea BPS son muy grandes y es una renovación casi total.
So the models are not perfect. It can be improved, but what BPS is trying to do right now to make this radical change?
Nuestro modelo ha demostrado funcionar bien. Cuando un modelo es exitoso como el nuestro, es preferible hacer cambios con prudencia.
So our model has worked well and has been successful. If our model's been working like this, then you need to be prudent about the changes that you want to make.
BPS también quiere expandir apoyos adicionales a los grados de K zero, K uno, K dos y primer grado, lo cual está muy bien, porque no expandir el exitoso modelo del co-teaching a esos grados.
So BPS wants to expand this model to K zero, K one, K two and first grade. That's amazing, but why not expand the co-teaching model in all these grades?
Como sea, cualquier expansión necesita venir acompañada de un aumento equivalente de presupuesto. En lugar de eso, estamos recibiendo menos recursos. BP, BPS quiere que hagamos más con menos.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
So if they want to expand this model, that is fine, but it needs to come with more budget. But instead of that, what BPS is doing, it's cutting the resources with BS. They want us to do more with less. Muchas gracias, señor Noemi.
Gracias.
We will not, the next speakers that were signed up with Spanish are not in the meeting, so our next group of speakers are Bevin Kenny, Nick Dickard-Hoff, Karina Harrison and Ruby Reyes. Mr. Kenny?
Is it okay for me to speak?
Yeah, you can start. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity to testify. My name is Bevin Kenny. I'm a parent of a fifth grader and a third grader at the Manning School. I'm a BPS parent since two thousand and seventeen, when my daughter started K one. I appreciate the opportunity to talk at this committee meeting and about changes proposed for the teaching model at the Manning School. Manning has long been a model of inclusion for students with social and emotional needs, but have only learned in the last few weeks that our school will lose teachers because our very successful model is not in alignment with the BPS vision of what inclusion should look like. Instead of coming to our amazing teaching, paraprofessional and special education team and asking them how inclusion can be successfully implemented, we're being told that BPS has a better model. The data presented to say we're not serving all our students seems very flawed. We've not been given data to prove that this new model is an improvement and this new model will affect all students in all the grades. We're not ruling out new teaching to one grade or to two. We are doing this to our entire school, affecting all eight grades in every single classroom and every single student. And as caregivers, we've tried to engage PPS and our school leadership for weeks. We've met a lot of resistance to our questions and concerns. We've only just received answers to written questions we submitted to our principal and Dr. Luna four weeks ago and we just received them yesterday. I'm disappointed that huge changes to our model have been made without sufficient community involvement in a very successful school and a model for inclusion. And I'm very, very concerned that we're losing talented teachers. Thanks so much for the opportunity to talk.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Nikki Dickard-Hoff.
Hi. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Nikki Dickard-Hoff. I am the mother to eight, I'm sorry, nine children, eight of who will be enrolled next year into BPS. I would like to share an incident that has occurred over a long period of time. We enrolled our children in April of two thousand and twenty-three when we moved into the district. Our children were separated, placed in multiple schools because we did not meet the lottery requirements in time. As a result of this, I have two little girls who have congenital heart defects, very serious ones, ones that required our families to move from Alaska to Boston to save their lives. We remain in Boston to remain close to the hospitals because that's what we need and that's what our little girls need. We turned in an IEP during that April two thousand and twenty-three enrollment. We turned in an IEP during that April 2023 enrollment period that was somehow lost. So the information was never passed along to the school that my daughter was selected to go to, nor was it passed along to anybody that had any contact with her. This is my daughter. This is Magnolia. On October 17th of 2023, I went out to the bus stop to pick her up, given that she is only four years old. She was covered in blood. Her ear was severely lacerated to the point that she needed multiple stitches to put her ear back together. She was left bleeding on a school bus for 14 minutes with no medical attention, no attention from an adult. The only care provided to her was from a second grade student. BPS failed to make sure that my daughter's IEP was in place properly. If her IEP had been in place, she would have gotten her door-to-door transportation and she would have gotten her seatbelt. We still don't know what happened to her because my daughter does not speak very well. BPS has failed my daughter and our family will carry permanent burdens, permanent scars on her little body that will never be made right. And instead of addressing this situation, I have been pushed down. My emails, my phone calls have not been returned until today, the day that I asked to be here on a public comment. Today is the first time that I have been heard. Today is the first time that somebody has made contact with me.
Thank you, Ms. Dickard-Hoff. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tarina Harrison. Ms. Harrison, please unmute yourself and start your video.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can see you. Thank you.
Okay, so my internet's going in and out, so I'll try to be as quick as possible. Um, hello everyone. My name is Tarina. I am an active, oh, I'm from Roxbury. My daughter goes to Orchard Gardens, um, K through A pilot school. Um, I am an active member at the Orchard Gardens School Community. As a parent, as a parent mentor and, and a parent council member, I see the needs of my community and how the budget doesn't match the needs. There are so many things that Orchard Gardens can benefit from when it comes to this budget, but instead we are losing over a million dollars while there are so many examples I could provide and will name just a few today. The seating in the auditorium needs to be updated, excuse me, needs to be updated. Some of the seats are broken and let's be honest, one size do not fit all. The gym could use some updating, specifically the bleachers. New equipment is needed. Old basketball uniforms, um. It's sad when the staff member have to reach out and get a donation of uniforms for their teams. The students are working hard to be on our sport teams and they deserve to have uniforms that represent their school pride. That should include new uniforms for all participating in sports like cheerleading, basketball, football, soccer and much more. Proper ventilation and pest control.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sure it's very hard to keep pests under control at school, but how do you, with the construction going on? Black rat traps around the school outside of the school can help keep most of the rodents away from the school. Some bathrooms at Orchard Gardens have mirrors and some don't. Why is that? Mirrors should be in all bathrooms. Um, you talk about building new schools, but, but what are you doing now with schools that have, that have their buildings being fixed up properly?
Thank you very much.
We need more money.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Um, hello, my name is Ruby Reyes and I'm the Executive Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance and Dorchester resident. City and central office leadership have begun to announce that there will be a list of school closures in the spring. As you all are preparing to vote on another MSBA proposal, Beja wants to remind you that you also voted on the following proposals for school buildings and projects. The Taylor and Shaw schools were merged and a school building site has not been designated yet. The McKinley's or the Melking Academies were promised a building, which has resulted in camera upgrades for increased student surveillance and their basketball hoop was removed to make space for additional parking. Renovations have not begun. The promised renovations for the Blackstone buildings and walls have resulted in the school community only being told they need electric system upgrades to add walls as the only progress. The Edwards has impossible renovations left to open for a projected fall 2024. The Jackson Man has not moved forward in any direction. The O'Briant School community fought to keep their school from moving to West Roxbury. It was a terrible proposal in process. In retaliation, the money set aside for their desperately needed renovations have suddenly disappeared because they demanded an authentic process and developed their own student, parent and educator solutions. The promised BCLA McCormick renovations that were supposed to be completed for their merger has resulted in their seniors at the old BCLA building and the new MSBA proposal before you today. This is a list of projects that are nowhere near completion. There will be more school closures. Where is the list of completed school openings and building renovations? When will transparency be provided for community members and those most impacted? The answer should be now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. The next group of speakers are Tarina, eh, no, sorry, Karine Wilkinson, Jessica Loftus, Suleka Soto, Roy Karp and Louis Bergelson. Karine Wilkinson? If Karine, if Karine Wilkinson is not in the meeting, we can go to our next speaker, Jessica Loftus. Oh, so Karine declined. Jessica Loftus is next.
Hello, hi. Uh, my name is Jessica Loftus. I'm a parent of two children who attend the JP Manning School. I live in Rosendale. My son is in fifth grade. He's had an IEP since K1 and has benefited beyond measure from the Manning Inclusion Model and we're so grateful for that. But I'm here tonight imploring you to reconsider the radical changes that BPS is pushing through at my kid's school and for inclusion schools throughout the district. Inclusion at the Manning is a model with excellent outcomes. We represent a school with one of the highest percentages of children with disabilities at 24% and the plan to reduce the model to shared learning specialists across gates, grades is a market reduction in services. Moreover, the caregiver community has been left out of any conversation about these changes. And in fact, from what I can tell, essentially duped by BPS to participate in IPT efforts that were ultimately an exercise in futility. It's beyond disappointing that BPS would pretend to value of community and teacher input in this way only to push forward a top-down plan. It appears that we are losing six beloved teachers from our school, including our library para, our music teacher and perhaps most alarming, the only two black teachers in our school. It's alarming that this plan is being proposed, proposed through a racial justice lens, but that framework is being selectively used when we think about structural racism and the loss of teachers of color. Our teachers have expressed profound stress and lack of confidence in leadership. I can't imagine that my child would have experienced the symptoms with fewer resources and more overwhelmed teachers. Someone in the last session said these are humans, not positions. Please listen to that. I applaud efforts to roll out inclusion across the system and to make sure that every grade has the same level of investment and resource. As a member of the larger BPS community, I want all kids to have access to the model of inclusion that our school has demonstrated success in and our budget should provide for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Suleka Soto.
Well, my name is Suleka Soto from the South End. As a concerned parent, I'm here again to highlight a critical issue undermining our children's education and within BPS as well as this budget process. The systematic exclusion of students, families and educators from essential planning and decision-making processes. The BPS Inclusion and Facilities Plan as well as this budget process aims to meet the unique needs of ELLs and students with disabilities and every other student. However, these ambitious plans are at risk of becoming an empty promise due, due to a significant and consistent BPS oversight, the lack of meaningful involvement of those that it aims to serve. Students, families and educators alike find ourselves sidelined and our expertise ignored. This isn't just an oversight, it's a direct challenge to the high quality, equity and inclusion values that BPS, this committee and even the mayor profess to champion. Different from what you heard at the last budget meeting, and I know I am not alone when I say this, there seems to be a deliberate move by BPS administration and the mayor to undermine genuine engagement even of this committee. The reality is that closed doors and denied fans breed families seeking real dialogue, erode in trust and devaluing the voice of the very community BPS is meant to serve. This approach is not just disappointing, it's very destructive. Before you vote, I urge the school committee to demand from BPS that beyond the seat at the table as a checkbox, we have a central role in discussions on budgets, facilities and inclusion strategies, that it offers clear, accessible reports on student, family and educator engagement and decision-making, acknowledging and rectifying failures in current processes. Any efforts to dilute our participation must be resisted and reversed by this committee. We need frameworks that bolster, not diminish our voice. Demand spaces where our concerns lead to action reflect our collective and wisdom, even yours. Thank you.
Next speaker is Roy Karp.
Hello?
Good afternoon. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Roy Karp. I live in Rosendale with my wife and daughter, who is a fourth grader at the Henderson Inclusion School. I'm testifying because I believe in the full inclusion mission of the Henderson. The school has the power to transform lives and I know this firsthand from our daughter's experience and many other families that we've gotten to now. I am here in solidarity with the BTU and their call for inclusion done right. At the Henderson, we have thoughts about how to do inclusion right. Our school has been held up as a model of inclusion nationally and has been celebrated in several documentary films. But it's the EPS central office. No one seems interested in learning from our experience. To the contrary, many families feel like our model of inclusion is being systematically dismantled while we remain under interim leadership and increasingly tight control by districts. Our IPT process was run in a way that was not inclusive of a parent or guardian voice. Our IPT was one of several across the district that did not request any funding even as we face a budget deficit. We've been told over and over that the Henderson needs to change the way it does things, that even though we are an autonomous innovation school, we need to change to fit the district's way of doing inclusion. This includes hiring a new staff member solely to provide pull-out secret services rather than using our push-in model. This at the same time that we're cutting a seventh grade history teacher um, to provide co-teaching in that class and many arts and enrichment programs. The district seems to understand inclusion primarily as a way to deliver special education. But at the Henderson, we believe inclusion is a whole school approach, a way of being in community together and touches every aspect of our school and benefits all students, whether or not they have an IEP. I respectfully ask that BPS stop interfering with our school and let us be the truly innovative school that our students, staff and families have worked so hard to build. Thank you for listening and the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next, the last speaker is Louis Bergelson.
Hello? Hi.
Hello.
Oh, my name is Louis Bergelson. Um, I live in Dorchester and I, I have two children at the Henderson Inclusion School. I'm speaking tonight because I'm concerned about the way in which inclusion, inclusive education is being implemented district-wide. By conflating the needs of students with disabilities with the needs of multi-language learners, the district's ignoring that the respective needs of these groups are quite different. Putting multi-language learners into jet-end classrooms without appropriate native language support is detrimental to both their native language and English learning. Separating students with disabilities from their peers in sub-separate environments, which is the current inclusion plan for many schools, including it seems the Henderson, is by definition the very opposite of inclusion. With the lack of adequate district support and a lack of clarity around BPS decision-making, our Henderson students have been let down and our nationally revered inclusion model is being systematically dismantled. We're, we are, sorry, we are proof of a process BPS is creating that is less transparent and therefore harder to be accountable to for student progress. There's value in inclusion when it's done right, but it's gonna be detrimental if it's done wrong. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chair, that concludes public testimony for this evening. Back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Parvex, and thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspective. Your testimony is very important to us. Our first action item this evening is to approve the appointment, Elena Parvex as Executive Secretary to the Boston School Committee effective immediately. If there are no questions or further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Lena as Executive Secretary to the Boston School Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Parvex. Will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Connetonandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa? Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Oh, I said yes too quick. Sorry, I unmuted myself. Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Eh, the motion is approved unanimously. Thank you.
And congratulations and we welcome you aboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Our second item this evening is the Grants for Approval totaling $911,946. Now I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for any final comments.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, no, we have a robust group of grants, uh, this evening. Uh, if, I'm happy to take any individual questions on them, but this is gonna be grant season going into it and, uh, I think in your packets you have the relevant information for each of them uh, as well as, uh, you know, what we're thinking in terms of measure. So I would encourage you to vote affirmatively for them so we can begin the work.
Great. Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Dr. Alkins?
Um, yeah, this, so this is still about, um, just improving like how we're getting this like as a group. Um, and just shifting, I'd love, I mean, I'd love to work sort of offline with, um, you all to think about how these pieces are, can become more digestible for us. Um, you know, just even just simple things to me like moving around sort of the purpose. A lot of the times like as I'm reading this, it's like I feel, I feel like I'm halfway, if not two-thirds of the way through the document before I understand what the purpose of the grant is. Um, and just shifting that stuff around. So I think it's easier for us to understand upfront. I mean, not that the details are not important about, is it, if it's a renewal or those things are important, but I think it's secondary and tertiary with respect to sort of what we're doing and then how we're comparing it. And then just continuing to, um, ask for updates around, are we creating a system where we can go in and check to see the grants that we've previously approved and then check the progress on them? Um, I don't, I don't know where we, we just are with that. Um, so I just wanna ask.
Yes, the Grant Office is working on that. Um, and, and I think that they'd be happy to sit and take any recommendations, Dr. Alkins, as to how to make it more readable. Uh, I do appreciate that some of the grants are dense and, uh, there's a lot of information in there. So, uh, certainly if there's an easier way for the committee, we're happy to do that. so certainly if there's an easier way for the committee, we're happy to do that.
Thank you. Right. If there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Parvics, will you please call the roll?
Good, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our third action item for tonight is the Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program Statement of Interest, BCLA McCormick 7 to 12 School. I'll now turn it over to our superintendent for opening comments.
Thank you, Chair, and you know, tonight we're following up on our February 28th presentation and asking the committee to vote in favor of the district's plan to submit a statement of interest for a new core project to the MSBA or the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The application is due in April and requires an approval from the school committee as well as the city council. The city council's Ways and Means Committee is expected to hold a public hearing soon and vote on the application in the coming weeks. Just as a reminder, MSBA offers competitive grants to municipalities to support school construction and renovation projects. The Core Program funds projects that include extensive repairs, renovations, additions, new school construction and so forth. If selected, BPS plans to design a full state-of-the-art campus for the BCLA McCormick that will be part of the Columbia Point community and connected to the UMass Boston campus as part of our community hub school strategy. And I think we spoke last time about the vision of BCLA McCormick being the first university-assisted community school's hub and what a wonderful opportunity that will be for the school. As you know, BPS previously announced that the MSBA approved the district's proposal to create a state-of-the-art educational facility for the PA Shaw and the Charles Taylor Elementary School communities. I want to thank our partners and MSBA for their continued collaboration and support. BPS Chief of Capital Planning, Dell Stanislas, is here tonight and certainly happy to answer any questions, but I would ask for a favorable vote by the committee.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Dr. Alkins?
Yes, could, could we just get a little bit of a refresher particularly on what the community engagement process is leading up to the submission of this and then what it, the intention of it is after, let's say it's accepted, just so that we just have an idea of like that, like what exactly does community engagement like look like? And I think we've been hearing that respectfully, just as long as I've been on the committee, just what, what, what that, what that would include for the BCLA McCormick process?
Sure. So Chief Stanislas, do you just want to speak to what you would typically do relative to the MSBA project as we do the submission and then certainly if we are invited to the next round?
Yep. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Alkins, for that question. In terms of engaging, so BCL, actually taking a step back, how we look at engaging school communities in this process? So in the past, we did not have like things like the FCA and the rubric to inform our decision-making on like how we're moving projects forward within sort of like the big like capital scope of capital planning and some of the larger facilities infrastructure projects. As we've developed these sort of like systems now, so looking at the rubric data and having actual conversations with like school staff and, and the school leaders and bringing this sort of like the school community along and like this is what the data is telling us. This is sort of like the reason why your school is being either like selected for a project, et cetera. Like this is, I think that this is more like future-looking community engagement process and a lot of this is going to happen as we start ruling out conversations about like mergers and closures and all of that good stuff. Where we are right now with the BCLA McCormick, I think that this is a little bit, a lot different. Where the BCLA McCormick is a bit different is that the merger for the BCLA McCormick community happened years ago and there were a lot of promises to that school community of like renovations and expansions of, of sort of like expanding the number of students on that campus. This has, this came up as part of the mayor's announcement for the Green New Deal, just like the Shaw-Taylor. So as, and, and this time around, as we had the data, the data actually supports. So as we look at the building experience for and where the facilities is failing in terms of like AD accessibility for students and in terms of like teacher and support spaces, like right now they're split across two campuses. And in order for us to one, to move forward with expanding the access for students and also expanding the access and the number of seats for students in the BCLA McCormick community because they do have a waitlist, we've had to like cap some of the enrollment there because of like some of the space issues that we've seen. We've, I, I myself, I've had a number of conversations with the school community about the MSBA process. Should their school be selected for the MSBA process? The next steps would be that the MSBA, the capital planning team, the PFD team would work with the BCLA community within, within I think the context of like the long-term facilities work that we're doing in terms of like how we're looking at expanding the area. We'll work with them on an ed plan feasibility study, sort of like programming. And the, the community kind of like gets to build it with the MSBA and capital planning. So all of the ed plans, the programming will be done with the community, with the school community and any of like their stakeholders that they share as part of the process. So I think the process for the MSBA is like quite a lot of engagement with the school community. Should the BCL, should any school community, I think that that's a process that we're going to be starting with the Shaw later this year, Shaw-Taylor later this year as they were selected through the eligibility period. So just wanted to name that like future MSBA announcements of school selections, the engagement would look different. I just think that there was a lot of promises made for the, for the BCLA McCormick school community and just like moving on some of the promises that were made with that community is important.
So thank you for that, and I guess in the 12 seconds that I have left, I will, since like, since, since I have you, just, I know that we've also had some recent workshops around the long-term facilities plan. And so as always, is there a somewhat of a timeline for us as a committee to sift through that? Or what perhaps were some new things that you all learned in those workshops, just to report back?
Yep. In terms of bringing it to school community, sorry, school committee, we will be bringing more of like the, the work that we've done in the workshops and also sort of like as we're working, as we start sort of like proposing like engagement plans to school communities, et cetera, we will be bringing this information to school committee to, for members to start like grappling with the data and understanding how we're making decisions, right? How we plan on making decisions and taking feedback. I think in terms of like community feedback, I think a lot of like what we heard through like the workshop session, I think that we continuously hear in those sessions the trust that has been broken and, and how we need to like work as a collective community to build trust back. I think collectively, we've heard especially from our high school students, the importance of like things like gymnasium, music rooms, science labs. I, I think that just like we've heard from our multilingual families and also our students with special education families, the importance of as we're doing this work, right? How we think about like breaking down like the system that has like been built, like in terms of like segregating certain groups of students and wanting to push more on the data and how we're looking at the data to solve some of these systemic issues. And that, I think we've heard like a lot of good feedback that we're tying into the work and would love to come to the collective like school committee members to share that feedback and also to actually dig into some of the data that we're, and, and sort of like the logic of like how we're making decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardet Hernandez?
Thank you so much. Just sort of a follow-up from the last time we were together. I guess I'm wondering sort of in lieu of a master facilities plan and understanding sort of our broader view for each grade band. If we don't, if we are not to be approved for this funding from the MSBA, is this still a priority project and will the, do we anticipate building a new building to house these programs or is this just something that we're doing given the opportunity for funding? Like where does this live in a series of other priorities for the district?
I think that that's a good question. I think that it's sort of like falls in just like the, the, I think the Shaw-Taylor sort of like announcement, like submitting to the MSBA. These projects are also a part of like the broader sort of like capital planning budget work that the city is doing in collaboration with BPS. And I do think that as a team will then need to like, one, it still remains a priority, right? For both the mayor and the superintendent, I think as a collective team, we then come back together in terms of like how we sort of like prioritize all of the capital planning projects, the larger sort of like renovation and new builds that is being proposed, moving forward.
Sort of like fair assumption if I'm reading between the lines, it's a priority, but not, it is not one that is the highest, that is like we're doing this whether we're funded or not or, or we don't have enough information and so strike while the iron's hot, you know what I mean? Like, do you get what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Since we don't have that sort of global picture around the vision, it's hard for us to say like, okay, we were going to do this anyway, this is the one to submit on because we were planning on doing it in five years or whatever, right? We had a seven-year vision for the system. I guess sort of I'm trying to understand, we vote on this in lieu of another project. Is it still happening or, you know?
So I, I would say that this was strategically picked. One, because a lot of the work, you know, had already been talked about with the community. The UMass partnership makes it really unique in a lot of ways for an opportunity. And so I would say, yes, this is a priority, a priority project for us. What, we will always reevaluate once we get additional information back from MSBA. And it may be that, you know, if MSBA doesn't fund it, there'll be some, you know, it'll still go forward, but it may not be able to go forward to the extent of what MSBA would have done. But I would say that given the location, the work that's already been done and the unique partnership with UMass Boston, this is considered a priority project for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Alkins?
Yeah, actually, I mean, sort of, I guess to follow up, just like on that, I guess you could also see the opposite too, right? If, like have we, if we've already, it sounds like the project is in a good place to, to be funded. It sounds like, like what it is. So the other question then could be, do we have a plan for, if it is funded, does that, the, the funding that we would have originally allocated for it, if the project didn't get funded, does that go elsewhere? And if so, where? Or are there ideas for that that you all have been considering? So.
Yep. Go ahead, Superintendent.
I was just going to say, Indell, certainly you should answer as well. I, I, you know, these, when these are submitted to MSBA, it is very raw when it is first submitted. And so there's no details in terms of budget or dollars. I think that we will always reevaluate depending on the timing and if something else has come up as a crisis or something different. But right now, this is a priority project for us. What, you know, what that means in terms of if MSBA, MSBA doesn't fund it, what that means in terms of what's available in the capital plan to dedicate toward it, that's not something we're able to give you today. But it would, we see this as a priority for the reasons, you know, that I suggested. Indell, I don't know if you want to add to that?
I think that you hit it on the.
Okay. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just have two thoughts on this. One, I very much, and, and Chief Stanislas hinted at this as, as I believe the superintendent as well, I very much view this and, and Dr. Alkins, your question about community involvement ahead of time was, was really interesting because I harken back to all the community involvement in the original talk of BCLA and McCormick merging together as well as when we had the conversation about the land next door, the ball field being used for potentially a Boys and Girls Club being built and then students be able to have it. And so many promises were made at the time about what would happen with this building and quite frankly, they weren't delivered on. And the students there and the faculty there have made it very clear. We have heard it in public testimony over the years about promises were made and you haven't done it. And going out and visiting the school with the chair, you know, we really saw and heard directly from the students how much they wanted this. And so to me, I view this as a step towards fulfilling a promise. To me, it's never really completed until you have a ribbon-cutting, right? But it's, it's a big step forward because asking MSBA, I think the district has learned so much now about what MSBA's priorities are and how to work with them. Really streamline it down, picking one strategically as the superintendent said, this is very strategic. Particularly the addition of that work with UMass is going to be defined, I believe, is going to be the defining feature of this school and make it a magnet for people wanting to be there. So you know, I'm, I'm really encouraged by this step and it's such an initial step, right? Just asking MSBA to consider it and it's almost visioning at this point. And that ties to my second point, which is when I think of following very, very closely this process for the Carter School, which has been many, many years in the making. The original submission of the MSBA was for a smaller project to just build a pool and MSBA turned it down because they said, we don't build pools. Then we regrouped, reconsidered, proposed a whole new school and literally, you know, it's just, all it is is a submission of interest saying, you know, would you work with us on this? And then the visioning process with MSBA, when they dig in with their experts and see what is actually needed, then they were like, of course you need the full immersion pool, right? Completely different from what they had said originally because it was, it was part of the visioning of the school that they do. So I'm, I'm encouraged by this process. It's, it's a very, very long process. As the chair said last time, the students who are there now will not be in the revised building because it takes a while. They will have graduated by then. So this is for future students at the school. But I'm encouraged and I think this will fit well from everything we understand of what MSBA looks for. So I'm cautiously optimistic that if we support it and then the city council supports it, it will hopefully be what we see by MSBA.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again for the conversation. I think we've definitely addressed the McCormick even before my time, probably since I was a student at BPS. But I respectfully just wanted to move to make a motion to take a vote. We still have to get this process into the city council. That in itself can take its time too. I'm just looking forward for the students to finally, for the future generation to finally have the, you know, building that they deserve. So again, just respectfully asking for a motion to take the vote. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Barbosa. Mr. Tran?
Just a dumb question, I guess. I have always been under the impression that any kind of project I have always been under the impression that uh any kind of project rests within the purview of the uh superintendent. And and this is only a statement of interest. Why do we have to vote on it? Is it, what what kind of requirement is this? Is it in the in our bylaw? This is just a statement of interest and we have to vote on it? So.
Yes.
So Member Tran, it comes from MSBA. Uh, they require both school committee and uh city council. I I think in general it is to show support on multiple levels from the district.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. I want to go back to Ms. Lima Barbosa's proposal. We have a motion on the table to take the vote. Is there a motion um to authorize, I want to entertain the motion to authorize the superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the statements of interest for the BCLA McCormick seven to twelve score. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or objections to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Sorry, I have a question. I have a request, I have a question. Are we, are we saying yes to the 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 motion or yes to vote on the mo- like I I I kind of missed that there?
We had the motion to vote to approve the submission. That is what Ms. Barbosa proposed. And so we had a motion, it was seconded. So that is what we're voting on.
Okay. Um, for the, to approve the statement of interest?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Carré Hernandez.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Such a um, it's a such a bureaucratic process, but anyway, I said yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our final action item for tonight is the Student Opportunity Act. I'll now turn it over to our superintendent for opening comments.
Great. Thank you again, Madam Chair and to the committee for the affirmative vote on the MSBA. Um, so as you know, uh, Dr. Eccleston, uh, who is the VPS Chief of Schools and Accountability and Dr. Leslie Miller, VPS Chief of Teaching and Learning, presented on the Student Opportunity Act, what we call the SOA, uh, on the February twenty eighth School Committee. To recap, the SOA was enacted in two thousand and nineteen to address ongoing disparities among different student groups. VPS presented its first Student Opportunity Act Plan in April of two thousand and twenty as part of the district's strategic planning update and district operational plan. The district is statutorily required to seek the approval of this body before submitting its two thousand and twenty four three-year SOA plan to DESI by April first. On February twenty eighth, we looked at the, we took the opportunity to focus on how the process will build on our two thousand and twenty submission with a focus of three of our key priority areas. Early literacy efforts, the opportunities for early college and career pathways and enhanced pipelines for educated diversity and qualifications. We appreciated the enthusiasm with which the members responded to that presentation and to our ongoing commitment to continued progress in these areas. And we also are very excited about this work. Since that meeting, we've also begun to engage with key partners in our school communities, parents, families and educators of our students. This engagement will continue throughout the next three years and we continue to learn and adapt to what is best for our students. On Monday, March eighteenth, you received a copy of the final submission that the district plans to submit to DESI by the April first deadline. I hope that tonight you will approve it unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to questions and comments from the committee. Mr. Carré Hernandez.
I am just sharing, if I'm remembering this correctly, part of what we talked about in the the last meeting was the focus curriculum and the early literacy programs. And while I'm voting yes, because as usual, I just think our work against the clock. And I was happy to see us having a conversation about data and outcomes particularly. I remain incredibly concerned that we are using curriculum that is not, has not been validated by external sources, particularly in our earliest grades. And I hear and I have submitted questions and I don't know if those make their way sort of to the general public, but I have submitted questions um about that process, but I do just think it's really important for us to be circling back as a committee. Like, we know phonics is the most important. I bet you it's lovely curriculum. But in this moment with the literacy outcomes that we have within our system and there being existing curriculum that is approved and validated, um, I just think it's really important for us to keep our eye on this conversation and to do whatever it takes to get external validation or decide if like the thing we've created can't be validated, then maybe we shouldn't use it. And so I just think that that's like just a really important conversation for us to to engage in.
Yeah, absolutely. I, Dr. Miller and uh Dr. Eccleston, I I think uh, in just a a minute or two, we can talk specifically about the high quality instructional materials and how we're vetting particularly for literacy.
So um, it, we appreciate the the um, the comment because we have, as we shared, um, and Leslie Ryan Miller shared last time, we've been vetting all the curriculum. In the case of focus, we are really working on trying to get it vetted and the the issue with some groups is because we actually use other vetted curriculum as part of it. So we use Hegarty for phonemic awareness and foundations for phonics. And so most places will not vet like partial use because they're so I, I think that's been our challenge, but we're getting very close to getting someone who can do that work, um, because that is really important to us, uh, that that is vetted. And then we make any necessary improvements um that that vetting and review um demonstrates.
I appreciate that. Yeah, as long as we, it remains a priority and maybe it's something we circle back to or we get an update when that validation starts to happen. I hear that that it's parts of multiple curriculums and part of why it's tough to vet is people are looking for something that's whole and sequential in a way that is much more familiar. Um, but it just, you know, it's the earliest moment of a student's experience and we know the most foundational part of someone's literacy journey. And so like if there's a re, there's a reason why external forces are not interested in validating this type of thing. And so I just think we have to be asking ourselves the question, even if a lot of really smart people have worked to build it. And I appreciate the folks circling back to me on this. Thank you.
Dr. Alkins.
Yes, thank you for um this report. Um, in fact, it's probably one of the first comprehensive, probably three-year plans, I think I've seen, I think that addresses particularly um black and um Latina um student experiences, multilingual learning experiences um very directly. I actually have a question, um, particularly the section around the teacher recruitment pipeline as aspects and the number of programs that are listed there, the statistics we've seen from those programs over the last couple of years. I guess I'm concerned a bit around one, being able to continue that process and then continuing that process amid what we've all are saying are like the S or cliff um, and just what we've recently heard or just around um how positions are changing within the district, certain positions being let go or um be codified. So just curious as to like what the current proposed budget does potentially to those those numbers moving forward.
Right. So um, I'll ask Chief Canty if she wants to join, but one of the things I will say is um, you know, we received a five million dollar um US Department of Education grant that we are matching. Uh, and so we're very excited about this because it really is enabling us to enhance the pipeline and to um look at particular uh positions like paraprofessionals as a way to be able to become teachers or educators of color. Um, additionally, uh, Director Martin is just continues to do an amazing job um with a lot of the pipeline programs, supporting all of our educators of color as they work through, whether it's certification, whether it's uh MTEL, uh, or whether it's a degree piece. Uh, and so we are not, you know, taking foot off the gas in this in any way, shape or form. If anything, I think with the uh waiver, the emergency waivers, um, you know, being re-upped within DESI, we're seeing that as a continuation to make sure that we're supporting every single educator uh and every single educator of color to get whatever the barrier is to that certification. So um, we see this, uh, you know, whether it is um uh linguistic diversity, whether it is racial diversity, whether it's experiential diversity, we're seeing this as opportunity in the pipeline work uh to to really drive this home. Uh, and I, Chief Canty, I don't know if there's anything else uh that you want to add with relative to RCD.
Good, um, good evening, school committee members. Um, one of the things that we are trying to leverage is a lot of our partners that um that that's doing this work with us. So we are continuously reaching out to um partner organizations such as um some of our local um universities to try to figure out how do we move this work along? Um, with the understanding that, you know, there there are some financial restraints that the district have, but like using the partners that we have to try to leverage that work has been one of the ways that like we intend on continuing this work by finding other sources um that sometimes does not have to be money, but like um finding resources such as, you know, individuals who can lend us their, you know, their educational facilities or, you know, make things um help our students um reduce the cost of some of the courses that we're um that they're engaging in. So we are reaching out, um, finding other resources that not, that's not necessarily always um dollar amount, but like other means that will be able to um allow us to um continue this work.
Will we move on? Are there any more comments, questions? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Boston Public Schools Statutory Student Opportunity Act submission to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thinking, is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll? Excuse me?
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Tran has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see it. Sorry, Mr. Tran.
I'm very sorry. I I'm I'm it's not a question, but I I just would like to put uh a mem- committee members on notice that I will abstain from this vote, given my serious concern regarding uh inclusive in inclusion practices that does not really address fully on plans for students uh with disability as well as uh bilingual students, students with multi- multilingual uh legal issues. So just because of that, I I I will abstain. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So well, Ms. Ms. Pravik, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Carré Hernandez.
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Polanco Garcia, Mr. Tran?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved with five yes and one abstention.
Thank you. Our last item tonight is a discussion regarding the superintendent's fiscal year twenty five budget recommendation. The superintendent has gathered the questions from members and this evening she and her team will provide additional information on those questions beyond the written responses we've already received. She'll be joined by interim chief financial officer David Bloom and her leadership team. Before I turn it over to the superintendent, I want to thank the members who have asked thoughtful questions and have taken the time to meet with the staff to understand the budget further. This is a complex budget. It's a one point five billion dollars. We will take a vote next week. So I want to remind everyone that this is your opportunity to request changes or address areas of concern. I will now turn it over to the superintendent for opening remarks.
Great. Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you again for the vote on the SOA. Uh, tonight is the final FY twenty five budget hearing with a vote scheduled for next Wednesday, March twenty seventh. We'd like to use this opportunity to address members outstanding questions about the FY twenty five VPS budget from the preliminary budget presentation, which was on February seventh and the two subsequent budget hearings on February fifteenth and on March fourth. The answers to these outstanding questions were shared with the members in a memo last week, which is also posted on the school committee website. Tonight, we would like to walk through the answers we provided for two reasons. One, to provide additional context and address any additional questions you may have. And secondly, so that the public can have a better understanding of how members' questions were resolved. I also want to acknowledge the Massachusetts Municipal Research Bureau's questions, many of which overlapped with members' questions. It is our hope this evening that members and the public have a deeper understanding of the complexities of the FY twenty five budget and how this budget is the first step in a multi-year process of shift shifting the way that we serve our students. First, I'd like to take a moment to recap how we've engaged with the school committee and the Boston City Council around this year's budget. We've held four budget public hearings and school committee presentations. My team attended more than a dozen meetings and fielded many, many calls with individual school committee members. We held ten one-on-one meetings with city counselors or their staff. Last week, we attended a public working session with the city council. And I'd like to thank city councillor Brian Worrell, who is the chair of the council's Ways and Means Committee for reaching out to me and to VPS early in the budget process in a spirit of collaboration and for making meaningful suggestions to this year's budget. We look forward to continuing to work with you and the rest of the city council. Also, all of our budget materials available online at bostonpublicschools.org forward slash capital budget, big B, for anyone who would like to review them more closely. Slide three is reoccurring because we would like to remind everyone that as we move the district forward, we will continue to ground our work in what you have heard us call the high-quality student experience in school buildings that support learning. As we have said regularly, the FY twenty five budget is about building the foundation to do the transformational work that we need to do but have been avoiding for decades. As we decide how to best support our schools in FY twenty five, we also need to be rethinking, to think, three to five years down the road. We need to be thinking about making historic investments in inclusive education to the benefit of all students across the district. Of shifting away from weighted student formula and continuing the reimagining school funding process that is now underway and shifting our physical footprint to better support the high-quality student experience. Throughout this process, we have reevaluated our current spending to determine what should continue and what should end, what is working and what isn't. As Chair Robinson rightly points out, we must always evaluate how we are using our resources and if they're not meeting the needs of our students. We need to repurpose those dollars to get better outcomes. For tonight's discussion, we've organized members' questions around common themes that emerged in our hearings, meetings, and conversations. And so those categories, as you see, general budget, which includes funding model, enrollment, and technical details of the budget, grants, which would include Title I and ESSER, inclusive education, overall academics, and overall operations. I'm proudly joined tonight by three, my three deputies, who will assist with answering follow-up questions as they come up in their areas. Dr. Linda Chen, Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics, Dr. Sam DePina, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, and Dr. Anna Tavares, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Community, and Family Advancement. We are also joined by the BPS Budget Team, who has just done incredible work this budget season, Interim Chief Financial Officer David Bloom, Budget Director Serena LaRocque, and Director of State and Federal Programs, Shira Dukovnik. We shared written responses to the questions last week. Some questions are more complex or have been asked by several members. So this evening, we will show all the questions that we've received and where members and the public can find the written answers. We have also highlighted a few questions we want to share more specifically. One question we've received from several members is regarding the formula we use to determine school budgets, including the inclusive education allocations. As we plan for the future of our schools, we must move from an old model of one teacher responsible for a certain group of students to a team, to a team teaching-based approach. A team-based teaching approach means that there's a group of educators and service providers who understand and can deliver the services and supports any student needs. We've said it before, but it's worth repeating. Every classroom with a homeroom teacher, serving students with disabilities and/or multilingual learners, will have additional resources beyond just the classroom teacher. Depending on the student's needs, it will, they will, we will determine that those additional resources may be, like some examples include a homeroom teacher working with a team that includes a special educator and/or an ESL teacher and/or a para to collectively create inclusive opportunities and provide the services students need. This meant rethinking how we align school funding by planning for our highest-need students first and looking holistically at current structures, students, staff, and programming. When you look at the weighted student funding formula, it really doesn't work for small schools or schools with declining enrollment. Dozens of schools across the district experienced this and were only able to provide basic student support services with direct injections of soft funding and hold harmless over the years. So what is the transition from weighted student formula to this year's budget? And eventually, a reimagined school funding approach? In this transition year, we started with the baseline of what each school was given last year and then took into consideration several factors. Classroom configuration changes, investments for the students the school serves, and for schools with increased enrollment, allowing schools to keep their hold harmless on general funds and other smaller investments. I begin with this explanation because our budget represents our values and priorities. We are undertaking enormous work and must ensure that we're thoughtful about the budget approach we take. We'll now share the additional questions from the members in the five buckets mentioned above. On this slide, we've gathered all the questions related to the general budget. As I mentioned, written responses were sent to the members and are posted on the School Committee website for the public. The two questions we wanted to provide further context are, are highlighted in yellow. And I'll ask interim Chief David Bloom to join me for these questions. The first question is about the long-term sustainability of our budget. And this is something really important to us to think about, talk about. As we recovered from the pandemic, we were foc, we've been focusing on stability. Now we're taking a critical look at what we must invest in and where we can find efficiencies. As our enrollment declines, our budget increases. Why? Because in Boston, our students often need more. We have a higher population of students who are economically disadvantaged, have disabilities, or are multilingual learners. We must provide all our students with both the academic and social-emotional supports to ensure that they have what they need to succeed. We also are shifting the way we serve students. As we dismantle broken systems, we know we can't rebuild them overnight. We must continue to operate some of the ways that we're serving our students while we build a new infrastructure, essentially creating parallel systems that both cost money. A prime example of this is as we implement our inclusive ed plan and expand choice and options for students with disabilities and their families, we still need to maintain some of our substantially separate program. As we've talked about, we know that we're also operating too many schools that do not meet our expectations for the high-quality student experience. We must consolidate some of our schools so we can reinvest these resources into improving the experience at other schools and increase the number of students gaining that high-quality student experience. The FY25 budget is a step in the right direction, but there are several more steps for us to take before I believe we'll begin to see a more efficient budget. The good news is that BPS is in its strongest position ever to transform schools. We have all the reports and the data to understand the problems and share that information transparently with our communities, and we now need to do the work. And sometimes to get the best outcome, you have to spend more upfront for the longer-term benefit. All of our work is deeply connected. If we want to lower transportation costs, we have to make sure all of our schools are inclusive so parents have options close to home and students aren't spending hours on the bus. If we want to spend less on emergency maintenance, then we must renovate and build new buildings. If we want to see stronger student outcomes, then we must invest in high-quality instructional materials and then ensure staff have the professional development to strengthen their skills and serve all students. As we plan for FY26, '27, and '28 and beyond, we know we must continue to find efficiencies, and we will, as we've begun to do this year. But we also know that it's going to take further investment to get us to where we need to be. The next question we want to answer on this slide is related to what is perceived as a decrease in the number of bilingual educators. I'll ask Mr. Bloom to join me in answering this in more detail. But as we've shared, while the technical components show this as a cut, the reality is much more complex. It's a combination of recoding of positions and how educators are classified in our systems, updates in the number of ESL minutes required, changes in the definition for SEI classrooms, and the consolidation of some of our classrooms. So while this looks like a major cut in one part of the budget, it's actually a reclassification of these dollars and is reflected in other parts of our budget as supporting inclusive ed. I'll ask Mr. Bloom to share more.
Thank you, Superintendent. As the Superintendent just mentioned, the change that you're noticing in the tables of a number of teachers in the bilingual teacher codes has changed for three main reasons. The first is the shift from BPS SEI to DESI SEI programming. As our, the way our system works is that when a teacher is working only with students in ELD levels one through three in what the district has historically called SEI, they're coded as a bilingual teacher. When they're operating in the DESI definition of SEI, they are not coded as a bilingual teacher because they are working with students in addition to their, students with other classifications in addition to students with ELD levels one to three. As a result, as some of our classrooms have shifted from our district-defined SEI to DESI's model, our technical systems have updated the codes of those positions to reflect their new program. However, this does not mean the position is ending and does not mean that the teacher in that position is being accessed. From a school experience lens, that teacher is still there, teaching a homeroom in the same way they were before. It's just that the combination of students in that homeroom are slightly different. The second thing that's changed is the change in ESL minutes. In negotiation with DESI and the Department of Justice, there's been a change in the minimum requirements for ESL minutes for students, especially in ELD levels one and three. These minutes on paper would require a significant reduction in ESL teachers. However, we largely did not take that reduction. Instead, refocusing the resources of those ESL teachers to focus on meeting the needs of our multilingual learners with a special focus on ESL supports for multilingual learners with disabilities. The final thing that has happened is classroom consolidation of classrooms that have historically been district SEI classroom. There are some schools and programs where we have historically operated district SEI programs in more grades, where there is no longer enrollment to support those programs, and they're being phased out and consolidated into the rest of the school. Those are the things that might seem the most like a cut from our previous definition or are the smallest part of the three parts I mentioned. The other thing I would like to note about the way our technical systems work is that the bilingual teacher label is a reflection of the students served in the classroom, not the language capacity of the teachers. Bilingual teachers are coded that way when they are serving entirely students who are learning English or multilingual learners. But it does not mean that the teacher themselves is bilingual. That information is separately recorded through our Office of Human Capital, and we are not necessarily able to collect it universally. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, David. So at this point, we'll move on to the next bucket of questions, which are related to grants. And specifically, questions related to the Title I dollars and ESSER. And I'll ask both David and Mr. Dukovnik to join me to be able to answer some of the highlighted questions.
Thank you again, Sue. The, so in regards to this question about Title I, schools spend Title I money every year in the first year of the two-year Title I grant. So every year when we get Title I, we have two years to spend the money. Schools are allocated money, their share, to spend in one year, in the first year of that grant. That money runs from September 1st of the year through August 31st, so it's a slightly different fiscal year than the rest of our funds. In, for FY23, there, some of that money was unspent. It is unspent for a variety of reasons that depend on the school community. The other thing to note and is being referenced here is that a portion of our Title I funds are required to be spent solely for the benefit of multilingual learners. Those funds are, schools bake individual plans to spend those funds at their school level in collaboration with oversight from the Finance Department and the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education. Those plans are reviewed both before, during, and after the expenditures. If any of that money for multilingual learners is left unspent at the end of the year, which it was in the case of FY23, there's always a little bit left unspent. That money is gathered together across all of the schools and given to the Office of Multilingual and Multicultural Education to identify programs and services to best support multilingual learners. Some of the ideas in the past that may continue are things like acceleration academies, additional tutoring, or other curricular supports to students to support their continued learning. It is too soon to say how much of their FY24 Title I is being spent because a lot of that work is still in progress. That money runs through August of 2024, and we'd be happy to come back and give the committee an update later in the year on progress towards spending the FY24 dollars. And I'll now turn it over to Shira to talk a little bit more about ESSER.
Good evening. I'm going to address these two questions. How much of ESSER is being rolled and how much is unspent? I'm going to address them actually in the reverse order. In your documents, you have a more detailed numerical breakout of this. But in summary, so far, year-to-date and across the three years of ESSER, two and three, we have spent $278 million. When I say spent, I mean both encumbered and actually paid out. Some of that money, particularly from this year, are, are have, is encumbered in purchase orders and contracts and will be paid out shortly during the year. Just as a quick breakdown from our previous presentations, the way that number looks is that $65 million of spending took place in FY22. $141 million of spending took place last year in FY23. And so far to date, we've spent $72 million in FY24. Now, while that sounds, might sound like there's a lot of additional ESSER on the table, we're actually very certain that we're going to spend far more than that this year. To meet our existing salary and benefit obligations for current ESSER employees, we'll spend an additional $32 million this year. And we are using ESSER to pay for another estimated $17 million of increased collective bargaining costs. We also anticipate spending approximately $43 million of other non-personnel funds that currently have a specific focus. So these are things like a partnership that a school has explicitly planned and documented that they're going to work with, curriculum that a central office is going to purchase. All of those numbers I just shared total up to $378 million, which means that we're currently projecting a carryforward or a rollover into the first few months of fiscal year 25, July, August, and September. We're projecting to carry forward approximately $19 million in ESSER. In the previous two budget hearings, the Superintendent and our team has shared a set of commitments for using $12.8 million of that funding to sustain key portions of ESSER investments for an additional year. And I'll just remind, for at least another year. And I'll remind the committee that none of the, none of the programming that's being funded for an additional year in this way is staff. So no positions are left in question because of this strategy. All remaining carryforward after those commitments is being set aside to offset any unanticipated costs in FY25 related to opening schools, needing to open new classrooms mid-year, or unforeseen costs related to the first year of the inclusion rollout and other things. And now I'll pass it to Dr. Chen for the next set of questions.
Good evening, School Committee members. I'm going to answer some of the questions that are on this slide here around a better understanding of the IPT process. understanding of the IPT process. So the Inclusive Education Planning Team is a team that is in every school, and it has a formal role um in terms of its composition as determined by an agreement with the BTU. So that is fifty percent BTU members that are elected and the other half uh school leader appointed. The purpose um for these school-level teams um is to ensure that staff who know their students best come together to establish a vision for including all students by reviewing their current assets, the areas of need, and how instruction and services are currently delivered, and then to discuss how they can create opportunities to provide greater access to grade-level learning um with the assessment of student need and current staff capacity to do so. What's particularly important here in this process that makes it also more challenging is that we are moving away from a centrally uh mandated, uh centrally-driven process of sorting and assigning students to classes based on disability or language. Instead, we want to make sure that when we are considering how to best include learners, the team considers both ways to include students with disabilities, different levels of learning, as well as multilingual learners, but also is able to include those students, but also consider when students need to be grouped by similar need, when it's educationally necessary. Part of that really is ultimately making sure that we have a continuum of services that's fluid for our students, available at each school or across a region, so that students can receive the instruction and services they need based on family choice. So this requires the IPT to take a close look at how they currently use their resources or personnel. Each school is provided with the resources needed, um, as our CFO shared, to meet IEP and ESL needs as part of their budget. The IPT consideration is to be able to look at how to increase and create flexibility so that schools can provide the instruction to students in inclusive classroom settings. While there isn't only one singular narrow way to sh- to meet those needs across situations, as the superintendent mentioned, what we find um is most helpful is to think of it as a team-based approach, where one teacher is no longer solely responsible for the need the, to support the learning needs of all of the students in one class. Rather, it really takes a team approach, where teachers work in tandem to provide grade-level learning. For instance, a homeroom teacher works alongside an ESL teacher, a special educator, an intervention teacher, or a learning specialist, to be able to meet the needs of a diverse group of students. Given that the constellation of the students may vary in any given class, therefore, the team would also vary depending on the needs of the students. To that end, the IPT submitted a plan for how they planned to organize their classes and what staff would be needed. The specific goal was to ensure that staff looked at the direct student-facing needs in the impacted grades. As you recall, in our Inclusive Education Plan, we are not um uh tackling this with all grades in the first year. Essentially, there's about a third next year, a third the following year, and a third the year after, to make sure that we can implement in incremental ways. In this complex um budget year, um, some of these staffing requests were also conflated with the simultaneous needs um in terms of positions that may sunset because of ESSER. Understandably so, as a school thinks about the whole needs of the school, there were other requests that were made that were beyond the impacted grades and were beyond the student-facing um needs that we are prioritizing. So to that end, um, there were various ways in which we approached this in terms of looking at what does the school already have in place, what can they use? And in many cases, there were multiple ways to leverage existing staff. In other cases, there were additional supports that were needed to both provide the opportunity for students to be included, as well as students in substantially separate settings to be given some part-time um opportunities in the inclusive classrooms as well. We discussed some of the questions related to the focused curriculum, and I can certainly um talk more about that, but in the interest of time, I want to also make sure that we move forward. Um, we are, um, in what we shared with the SOA presentation, as well as uh a memo that we shared with the school committee, um, do recognize that we have much work to do in making sure that students are in fact able to read, write, speak, and listen in ways that are at grade level, and that is specifically why um we are making sure that we have the ability to provide um tier-one instruction with high-quality instructional materials, the instructional supports that are needed to give all students acts to, access to that curriculum, and also to provide additional, sometimes we call it MTSS, but multi-tiered systems of support. Most typically, it has come through the support of reading interventionist, which is also part of this uh current budget. And with that, I will turn the slides back over to, I believe.
I'll take it. I'll take it then, though. Uh, so tha- thank you, Dr. Chen, very much. Um, the last bucket of questions is around operations, and so I would ask Deputy DePina and Director of Transportation, Dan Rosengard, to come on and be able to uh talk through some of the questions that are highlighted.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, thank you, Dr. Chen, um, and good evening, school committee members and members of the public joining us this evening. I want to start by just publicly thanking the Operations Division team for helping us organize all the questions we've received and helping to um compile all the answers to your questions, and we're happy to share them with you um publicly in documents as well as uh specific questions down. With regard to the questions that you see here, uh, we're going to focus on the transportation questions that were um that were asked, and there were three specific questions. We'll take them in order um as we go. As noted in uh previous budget hearings, the FY twenty-five budget included twelve million dollar increase in costs. Those costs are largely driven through our yellow bus operator, private transportation for students in transition, and rent for our bus yards. Although not specifically noted on the slides, these cost increases were also partially offset by five million in reductions within the Transportation Department. As the Inclusive Education Plan is fully implemented over the next few years, more students are able to attend schools closer to home. We do anticipate seeing a reduction in the overall need for transportation. However, we do not anticipate seeing a reduction in transportation needs during this upcoming school year. It will take several years for the Inclusive Education Plan to roll out across all grade levels. Additionally, current students are grandfathered in such a way that they have the option to keep their current school assignments. We are also seeing growth in transportation needs as a result of increased numbers of out-of-district placements and students in transition. We'll continue to monitor each of these areas to improve our projections and look for opportunities to reduce overall transportation volume. The five million uh dollars I referenced earlier also includes one million dollars in efficiencies that we've been able to realize this past school year. I also want to thank the Transportation Team, who tirelessly continues to make progress to implement system-wide improvements, including many of the recommendations by the Council of Great City Schools. These include first, the Lyft partnership. Earlier this year, we were able to partner with Lyft, and the Transportation Team is now able to uh deploy lifts or car ride shares to families as a last resort backup transportation option in situations where BPS Transportation is unable to provide a student with their IEP mandated transportation on any given day. As you're aware, we've worked tires tirelessly to increase uh our driver pool and our bus monitor pool. To date, um, just to remind everyone, uh, our goal was to hire seven hundred and forty-three drivers. To date, we've been able to hire seven hundred and thirty-five of those drivers and have twenty-seven in training. Our goal for bus monitor hiring was to hire seven hundred and fifty monitors. To date, we've hired seven hundred and forty-three, with twelve in the process of being um onboarded uh currently. As a result of the progress made in hiring and retaining monitors, we have only had to use this option for the ride shares in limited cases so far. We average about one to two of these rides per week. Given the cost of a roundship lift, this is not a cost-saving mechanism. However, it has provided the district with an additional last resort backup transportation option for our families. Regarding the M seven MBTA passes, uh, starting back in the s- in two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three school year, these passes have been distributed to all students in grades seven through twelve, including those students who also have yellow bus transportation in their IEPs. We have been working with the Office of Specialized Services to help provide traveling training resources for students in grades seven through twelve who currently receive yellow bus service through their IP, such that, when appropriate, those students can be supported in transitioning to traveling on the MBTA. Additionally, students in grade six can opt into an MBA pass in lieu of yellow bus service. Ridership policies and procedures. Um, our Transportation Team has completed benchmarking of ridership policies with other districts, and is now working collaboratively with the Transportation Advisory Council to develop a ridership policy recommendation for the district. I want to thank all the members of the Transportation Advisory Council for all their feedback and input on this work to date. This will likely include a clause around suspending a student's transportation assignment if a certain number of consecutive days of non-ridership, with an option for families to reinstate bus service, bus services later is needed as well. We're also piloting an opt-in approach to transportation this summer for our extended uh service year program. Through these efforts, we hope to be able to implement a ridership policy that makes sense for the district and our families. This will also help ensure that we are focusing our resources on those students who rely on yellow, on, rely on and use yellow bus services. With regard to routing and technology, um, we are rolling out more efficiencies uh with the use of GPS tablets. The Transportation Department completed an RP process last summer for new transportation routing technology, as well as GPS tablets. We are currently working through the implementation of these purchases. The new technology is aimed at improving routing efficiency and providing GPS navigation tablets on buses to improve bus operations. Tablets also include ridership tracking features, which will enable us to better identify students who are consistently not riding to support implementation of the ridership policy mentioned above and support more efficient bus routing. The Transportation Team is committed to continuing to think critically about all aspects of our transportation, to look for opportunities to improve efficiency, and ensure we are providing safe, reliable transportation in, in cost-effective transportation, which is one of our operational goals. Um, before I uh turn it back over to Superintendent, I also want to address uh questions that came up regarding our athletic investments. Um, we have, to date, um, about a four-point-eight million dollar budget planned for, for um the transportation, the athletic department uh next school year. Um, we have about two-point-three million dollars for coaching stipends, one million in central staff, one-point-five for equipment, contracts, and officials and fees, and that work will continue to expand. Our focus in athletics will be to continue participation for both boys and girls, students in all sports. We plan to continue to invest in sports at the elementary school level to help increase in um uh expose students at a younger age to our athletic opportunities. We're also going to continue to invest in college tours, in opportunities to connect student athletes with post-secondary institutions. We've continued to hot, to, we will continue to have all of our high schools registered as MIAA members and uh and complying with all MIAA uh rules and regulations. To date this year, we've made investments with our ESSER dollars that will have years of an impact. For example, we've invested in bleachers, lights in our gymnasiums, weight rooms. We've, we, we revamped our athletic trainer model. We've offered summer athletic camp opportunities, and most importantly during the year, large-scale academic enrichments. We anticipate those to continue um over the next few years, um, and look forward to more continued success and hopefully bring home more championships uh um for, for the city. With that, I'll turn it back over to Superintendent.
Great. Thank you, Dr. DePina. Um, so really, Chair, this, this is concluding. I, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share information, and as I reflect um myself of where we began and where we've come, um, I really want to thank the committee and each member of it. Uh, you have been really tireless in advocating for certain areas that have caused us to think differently. Um, so many different questions in a, in a great way to be able to get us to think about it and to make sure in the budget that things are funded appropriately. Um, and I think many of your questions reflect the public comment uh that we've heard over the course of the hearings and tonight. Um, but it's really been an investment of your time, each of you, to get us to the point that we are with the budget. Um, as I reflect, there's certain areas that I know we have since the inception of the budget process to now um gone back in the budget, revisited, and in some cases, made um made alteration, uh, areas around mental health and social emotional support. Um, there were many of you that raised that as concerns uh and wanted to make sure uh how we were funding it and to advocate for that. Certainly on school-based budgets, um, really encouraging us to go back into the budget and to be able to put as many dollars as we could toward our schools uh and toward the services that are going to help our kids. Uh, and that, that really caused us to go back in efficiency dollars and really look at central budgets uh to the tune of seventeen million to be able to redirect back to uh, back to our schools uh and students and staff. Um, the pipeline strategies at all levels for, for our staffing, uh, and that really is recruitment, it is development and retention, uh, removing barriers uh for educators of color and advancement. Uh, and so that was even brought up this evening, but it's been a theme of the questions along the way. Restorative justice, school culture, um, in making sure that uh, you know, our schools are places where students see themselves and have a strong sense of belonging, um, and what comes with that, you know, with our restorative practice. Uh, alternative education, you know, there's been a lot of questions around our approaches of chronic absenteeism, approach to alternatives for dropout, uh, and that really caused us to go back and look at alternative education in a different light, as I think we reported out at the beginning of this meeting. Uh, bilingual education has been since the inception uh in one that we are constantly uh focusing on, but that really is around our staff, our hiring of our staff, our retention for our multilingual staff, access to native language and expansion of that um for our learners, uh, in literacy and reading, which was a core conversation tonight, and that even extended relative to the libraries and making sure that our libraries are staffed in a way that um support uh as well as reading specialists uh in our reading efforts across the district. So I just want to thank the committee for what's been a really thorough process, but also one that's been, um, I think, one that's evolved over time as it should over the last several months, and uh I hope that the budget that um we're sharing with you today- And uh I hope that the budget that um we're sharing with you tonight does reflect that and certainly happy to. Take questions and to, to hear any other uh suggestions and recommendations. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, as I said earlier to my fellow members, this is your opportunity. To discuss the, you know, discuss the budget, ask, ask all of your questions if you have concerns. What is it that you would like to see changed? I also want to remind members that in addition to this meeting, the superintendent and her team are available to meet with you. And discuss your areas of concern or interest. We will vote on the budget next week and now I want to open it up for questions. Mr. Carden Hernandez.
Yeah, thank you so much for the update and walking through some of those key questions. Ju- just as a question for next week, there was additional questions that I submitted that aren't in the final list, so I'm just wondering if we'll go over those. I submitted another ten or twelve.
Uh, yes, so, um, so first of all, thank you for those. Uh, whatever we didn't answer this evening, we will be able to get back to you, uh but they were, because they were submitted so close. Uh, we were preparing for this, um but we, we will provide what we haven't covered tonight, Member Cadet Hernandez in writing.
Copy. The question, I want to move through a few things and I will, I'll go through a second round. I guess the biggest thing I'm curious about. Is around the sort of community engagement piece. We are sort of, we've been alluding to. The fact that we will be making announcements in the next few weeks around school mer- closures, mergers, consolidations. And that will continue to be a process we're going to go through. Once this year and then again next year, I suspect. I'm curious where in the budget can you point us to that shows, given the history of. Um, community engagement around some of these processes, like. Where are we beefing up or moving resources or consolidating to make that process feel better? Particularly given that I think the suspicion is that that number. In order to realize some of these other things we're talking about will be large.
So I think it's in several areas. Um, first of all, um, the, the capital planning team itself as a unit began on Esser. Uh, and we have developed that out, uh and we have actually added to it even on Esser to knowing. Uh, the kind of robust staffing and infrastructure that we needed there. We've now moved that onto the general budget, so it's secure and that staff is really dedicated. To the kinds of projects that we're talking about and eventually relative to consolidations. Uh, you know, and or a closure. Um, I also think with family engagement, there's a lot of work that's happening as we strengthen family liaisons. And we've worked around capacity building there. There's lots of um cross uh work that's happening. Between the departments of capital planning, uh working with communications, which is also a big investment. Area that we've made off of Esser and now moved on to the general budget. As well as uh the family, the community and family engagement area. So, um. At the district level, there were a number of things that began on Esser. And then as things evolved, we had to shift, but they're in the areas that. Will enable us to have the kind of support and capacity that as we take these projects on. Uh, they'll work in relative to the community engagement and most importantly, supporting community through transition.
Copy. And as we move into, maybe it's next week or in of the response, I think it would just be really helpful. To see, knowing that some of, you're, we're talking about a lot that existed under Esser Fund, moving to the general fund. But if we're amping up the, the. Amount that we're doing, are we building a team that's going to be able to be responsive? To what seems like a pretty major policy shift that we're moving through as a district? And if you can point us to that, even if it's headcount or structure. Um, it seems like a place we have to invest in, given. The shift, so I'm just not, you know, I'm hearing the move from Esser to general fund, which is great, but. I'm not understanding sort of what's new and different going into a big policy change that we'll see next year.
So David, I don't know if you uh want to take that now and actually point to Member Cadet Hernandez where. Those are, or if you want to um respond.
I'm happy to start now and then I'll, I'm sure we'll provide a more detailed answer in, in writing, but the thing I would just say about it is. While the policy shift is happening. In a lot of ways for next year, the work is actually happening this year. Um, and so a lot of the investment in staff. And additional capacity are actually reflected in the FY twenty-four budget, not the FY twenty-five budget, so. Your, your, your observation is accurate. A lot of the, the new money. That we're spending in general fund is in the shift of things from Esser to general fund. Because we've been ramping up those services so that we're ready for next year. Too often in the past, we've said to you at this time of year. We're coming to you with this big new project. We're excited to start it next year and there's money in the budget for next year. And the problem with that is you can hire somebody then in July or August or September for work that you're trying to start in September. And that's very hard to do. It's very hard to get people hired that quickly and move things forward. So the wonderful benefit we've had with Esser is the ability to really get this work started under the superintendent's direction in advance. And so, yes, in the formal budget, what you're seeing is a lot of moves from Esser to general fund. But really, a lot of those moves are positions that were new for this year as this ramped up. And uh, I'm sure we'll need to give you much more detail in writing as you've asked for.
For instance, there's, I, I think a total of twelve FTEs that are dedicated to capital planning and they're, they're finishing their hiring now. So to David's point, uh, the scale up has really been tremendous over this year. Uh, and that is really the team that's going to support, but then additionally in communications. There were some, I believe, five or six positions that were hired out that will complement and support as well.
And maybe that can just be the sort of sharing what the structure is of that team. It's the thing we're always hearing concerns about. Eh, and we are not even managing at a large scale right now, so it begs a question. And again. Not, I have no idea sort of what's to come. But I'm making assumptions based on the presentation and what we've talked about here, that it's, it's a significant policy. The last question I have for this round is just around special education. We heard a lot, particularly from families from the Manning. About the shift in their model. And so I have a lot of curiosity and I wonder if you can help us understand sort of. I'm un, I was unclear, I don't think I voted for the reform for this reason, like I was unclear about. Um, sort of like what are schools being asked to do? And like what is the, the district vision around special education? It felt like we heard from a lot of people engaged in this. Process and then were rejected in the process of like, we have a vision for special education, that's what we were asked to do and it doesn't meet the district's vision. But the district's vision may have not been clear, and then you have successful schools. Who have been doing inclusive education, who have served as a model for the city, who are saying they've actually experienced incredible disruption. To their existing model in service of the district model. Um, that is now part of a sort of funding formula for how we're thinking about inclusive education. Can you sort of help us make sense of that, what we're hearing, how you understand it? And sort of where the middle ground is, and then I think specifically too, like what's the story that's happening? With a school that's already serving. Kids in an inclusive setting really well or better than other schools in our system and how they're experiencing this change.
So David, do you want to just ex, uh, talk about the crosswalk of the IPT to the budget process and then I, a few things I'll add in?
Yeah, I'll say, um. I think. One of the things that has been definitely been hard this year. As we've been doing that crosswalk of the IPT process to the budget. Is we've taken a, a very close look at. The specific connections between what's actually in the IEPs and what's reflected on budget. Too often historically, we relied on these sort of disability codes as a proxy for need when building budgets. And so much more, as you've heard from the superintendent, Dr. Chen, our budgets have really been built, built more based on the needs of IEPs. Um, and apologies, because I'm coming in from leave, I might not get the examples perfectly right. But what I can say, and I don't think this is about the school you mentioned, but just to, to say as an example of a conversation I was in this winter. Um, there are some schools where we told them they had to hire more staff. To service kids outside of the classroom. As a part of their inclusive education plan. And that feels contradictory. We made them budget more staff who are designed. Whose, whose sort of job is to serve kids outside of the core classroom as a part of their inclusion plan. Right? And so, you know, I heard some things in public comment, like how can those two things be true? And the answer is that what the inclusion plan does. Is meet the needs of kids in the general education setting for there to be inclusion as much as their IEP directs us to and allows. But also to make sure we're meeting the needs on their IEP that says they need to have services provided outside the classroom. And what we found in some cases when we were doing this deeper review. Is there were schools who were trying to identify ways in a very positive spirit to meet the needs of kids inside the classroom. That are actually, some of them are required to happen outside of the classroom for a variety of reasons that I'm certainly not expert in. Um, and that's why I won't dive into. And so I think it's been a little bit of a challenge for us to explain that. For, we're making you budget this position to work with students outside of the classroom. When we're focusing on inclusion as a part of your inclusive plan. Um, it's been a sort of hard conversation. For us to have, but the goal is really to make sure that the staff that are providing services are reflecting the needs that are on kids' IEPs. And I think as we continue to revise our IEP process and our budget process alongside it. The thing that we've committed to do under the superintendent's direction and with support from our steering committee that met for reimagine school funding and others. Is to make sure that our funding system is being driven by. Student needs and the instructional models we're planning to meet the needs of students. Versus having a funding system that then directs certain types of student need, uh, the sort of instructional models being the only ones you can afford. So I'll just say that's what I saw sort of to your question through this process. Um, and I'll sort of definitely welcome any, any follow-up questions, yeah.
Yeah, I, the only thing I would just add to that, sorry Chair, the only thing I would just add is that I do think in, and it's understandable. Um, given that schools were feeling the loss of Esser. And even though we did good work last year and the leaders in their school site councils did good work in moving things over to the general budget. In the first round of the IPT, there was a lot of blending of trying to. Put forward positions that had been on Esser, that were not directly connected to IPT. Uh, and put them forward to try to, to maintain those positions. And I think that really was a big delta in what we ultimately funded schools versus what was asked for. So I, and it's understandable because at day's end, uh, many people said it. This isn't just about a position, this is about human beings and people that are connected to the community. And so having been a school leader, I understand fully why that kind of uh from the community side was the approach. But at day's end with the IPT, we were really trying to look at the resources that existed in the school. And then what did we need to add over and above that to make it work?
Dr. Elkins, had you raised your hand and lowered it? Um, I'm not seeing any hands right now, but I saw a few a minute ago.
No, I did. It was actually basically that follow-up question around what particularly have we learned from like the IPT process? Um, but also, I, I also think that like what we've heard tonight, and I had mentioned this weeks ago around. What I had heard was, was, was not, like, I guess, like, the response didn't resonate with me in the same way. Um, because it felt, because it also felt like. Schools and school leaders and, and respectfully those school communities were feeling like. They, the positions that they had asked for were. Really necessary just to maintain baseline of what they were doing and, and, and it feels like they were. I don't want to say robbed, but at the same point in time that they were. Um, their ability to now even operate at compliance level. Is compromised, be like, had been compromised through this process. And so I'm trying to reconcile that. Um, still not there, but you know, really trying to reconcile that and so I'll definitely follow up with some questions, but. Um, have to collect my thoughts on this.
To that end, Superintendent, while we're on this particular topic. Um, as school opens and, you know, programs get settled in. Um, are there additional resources set aside to help to go back and to amend? You know, what the actual needs are in schools if it turns out to be different than the expectations of these. Current allocations.
Yes, thank you Chair, that's a great question. Um, so, so the answer is yes, we, uh, I think we've presented a couple of different times about. Keeping a small reserve so that we are able to go, again, this is about students and student need driving it. And so, um, if we're seeing that uh something is not working based on the student need. Then that's what that reserve will be for. Um, David, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, I would love to just quickly add that we're not going to wait until the start of the school year. Um, the, the real challenge for some of our schools has been. There have been whole groups of students who haven't had access to their school community before. And so, we don't know what's going to change, right? Um, there's a school um example I used earlier where they literally had zero students with disabilities in K two. They had thirty-three kids and I think maybe one kid had speech services, but. Um, zero other students, right? So there was no instructional need for special education. So when their IPT team met, they didn't have a lot of data to go on. It's not, not their fault, not the school community's fault, nothing they've done wrong. Right? They just don't know. And so for a school like that, we're going to learn a lot more. In April and May, as we start to see who gets assigned to their school for K two. And if there's a change we need to make then, we'll be able to make it then. Right? And so, yes, it's definitely going to be an adjustment during the year as we see needs change and things flare up, but. It's going to be something that we're reviewing weekly or bi-weekly as much as is relevant, starting really in the middle of April. As soon as we have that information about student needs and where, where they're planning to attend school.
Thank you. Mr. Cardet Hernandez.
Just a few more questions. Um, I guess. Four steps back, because I've asked a lot of questions about sort of the future of the whole harmless. Process and when we move away from that so that we can consolidate resources and I think. Actually, probably a lot of the sort of staffing concerns we've heard about and things like that get addressed when you start. Creating larger clusters of kids to support program needs. And maybe this connects to the second question, so like, there's a part of me that's like, when, when is the end of holding harmless and like difficult decisions? And then I guess at the same time, like, what is the reimagined student funding? And when does that roll out and when are we engaged in it as well?
Yeah, so David, I'll, if you want to start that one and I'll chime in.
Yeah, um. So the thing I'll just say is, in a lot of ways into the first part of your question, this was the hardest year. Um, because of the end of Esser primarily. But also because this was the first year we didn't run weighted student funding. And despite the fact that we had talked about it with school leaders, that we had a school leader advisory group, we had a community advisory group. Um, it still sort of was, I don't think anybody really believed we were going to stop, even though we had said we were going to. Um, and so, there's, um. I think that is a lot of ways the biggest change. As we move forward, I think the, the challenge is going to be, um. How do we reinvest resources that are freed up and what are the right ways to free up resources? Right? Because we don't want to create a situation where it feels like. We've just cut from this one school community so we can give to a different school community, right? And so the real focus of this next year, now that we no longer have this Esser cliff in front of us at schools. Which was really significant, right? Sixty-six million dollars of stuff on Esser going into FY twenty-four at schools. Um, we're going to be able to think more tactfully about sort of the framework of reimagine school funding and thinking about. I sort of almost think about it like weighted classroom funding at the elementary level, right? Or weighted student grouping need funding at the secondary level, right? So that we can really say, yes, there are some resources that are discretionary that you already need to give per pupil, right? Because it, you know, you need varying amounts of school supplies per pupil, right? I think we can agree like paper, that sort of stuff, right? I think we can agree like paper, that sort of stuff, right? That makes sense per pupil. But there are other resources that probably shouldn't be that dynamic. That should move off of groups of students, whether that's homerooms at the elementary level or something a little bit more complicated at the secondary level. And so I think that's going to start to take more shape as we move into the F Y twenty six budget. Um, and as we talk to you over the next year as well as to, you know, the B T U and, and our community and our school leaders and other folks to really. You know, drive home what that looks like. And I think, um, apologies if I'm getting ahead of myself here, but. I think one of the things, you know, that I've got ringing in my ear from the chair and other means is, you know. This is how, if we do make any savings as a part of school mergers or consolidations or anything else that's happening. It gives us an opportunity to reinvest right back into schools and to make sure we're giving that sort of high quality student experience all of our kids deserve.
That's, that's helpful. And then is it fair to superintendent, were you about to say something? I apologize.
No, I was just going to also say that I think as you brought up member, is like. The efficiencies relative to the big op side of the house, which is the transportation and food service and all those things. It, it's taken this year of building foundation, right? And putting, starting to put into place. Um, things like the ridership policy that's going to enable. The difficulty is that we also have some economic driving forces in the form of inflation. Uh, in the form of until we can get out of, uh, out of district students back into the district, as I know you've brought up. So there's also some counter influences in here economically. That, um, you know, it's, it's just as the next few budgets go through. We're, we're going to do our best to squeeze every dollar of savings out, but we also. Are kind of faced with that economic piece. And so there just has to be a reality to it. Um, you know, where, where people are kind of hearing that. Uh, but our focus is to give as much to the schools as possible. To also have the infrastructure to support the schools in ways that haven't happened before.
And yeah, I, like, I guess the second piece though, just for us understanding future budgeting and you. Did do this preview for us around not the sort of ending of hold harmless last year. I guess in a preview then for what, as we were saying, this is a budget to build off of like. Then what can we expect moving forward? Is there a formula for then how we're funding classrooms? Is there a formula? For how we're funding elementary school classrooms and a different one for middle schools and a different one for high schools like. As a governing, I'm holding space for like, this is a transitional year and I'm also holding a lot of space for. The district historically and a lot of urban districts has had a lot of control over what schools get what. And that has had really negative impacts on kids of color and kids with disabilities. For political reasons and about, you know, I was a principal and I was a first year principal. Who did not want to advocate hard because I wanted to keep my job. And then. I was a principal later in my career who, you know, realized I was too good to get fired. So like. You know, there's just, you get something different based on where you are in your career and you can push different. And I worry about that inequity and that is the beauty of a formula for budgeting. So is that something we're building towards and what, when will we have that? And that'll, that's the end of my questions.
Yes, the reimagining funding is, um, it's a set of recommendations which we will bring forward as we look at them. And put them together with what we're able to do, but the timing of those recs and the budget process this year. Really just allowed us to be able to do more of transitional. Um, but that will be coming forward, uh, to the committee. And David, I don't know if you want to say anything else about the reimagining.
No, I, I, I mean, I, sorry, I shouldn't start, no, because the answer is yes, I want to say a quick thing, which is, um. I think at the core of your question is something we deeply believe, right? Which is. The thing that weighs student funding, one of the things that weighs student funding did really well. Is it put all the dollars out there and all the decisions out there. And if there was a backroom deal, it was published on a piece of paper and you got to read our justification for it. And then you got to be like, hey, what's the deal with that backroom deal? Why did that school get that thing? And it was literally on there, we gave it to the school committee and the beginning of the process, it was public, it was on our website. That will not change. Right? It's effectively the way to think about it is it's a different formula. It is a, it is a no longer weighted student formula fully. Right? There is a weighted student, I think, component to it, but it's no longer fully weighted student formula, but that doesn't mean it is no longer a formula. And so very excited over the next, I guess, nine or 10 months now. To share more information on that with you as we get closer to our process. But you put your finger on a very important part of where we're heading going forward.
Ms. Lima Barbosa.
Thank you Chair, um, most of the questions I had, I know Dr. Chen addressed it. In the, uh, presentation itself, so I just wanted to thank her, but also thank the whole budget team. I can't believe you all actually. Went through all these questions and, and did it live here with us. Uh, again, I, I've been in other. Uh, spaces with the budget team when it comes to, uh, D P S budget. So I, I'm just happy to see that you all are trying to do it. A little bit different, um, and bringing those questions back into the chamber, well. The virtual chamber and addressing it here. Um, I think it's good that there's still opportunities for us to send more and hopefully we can get those on. In writing, and I'm assuming superintendent, you could also address them during your report, uh, at the next meeting as well, just for. Transparency of what questions were submitted and just, uh, just so we can maintain, uh, this, uh, consistently. Uh, but no, I don't have any particular questions. I, I just know that one, you know, this is my first budget. In the committee, so I'm kind of going at the same as, uh, Mr. Cardet Hernandez. We get it in terms of like the transition, but there's a lot of history, there's a lot of pain and hurt. And I fully understand why there's a lot of mistrust from the community. Uh, but hoping that we are starting to see a change with this particular budget. And, um, I'm, you know, ready for, for next week for us to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just want to check in with Mr. Mater, you had your hand raised? Did you have a question?
I, I think some of it was covered, uh, by Mr. Cardet Hernandez's questions.
Okay. Mr. Romeo.
Thanks, Madam Chair, so since see how this have gone, um. Yeah, I, I echo some comments and I do have some questions, uh, echo the comments of really appreciate the process here and tonight's. Presentation of sharing all the questions, highlighting some, but then having the, the document. That actually shows all the questions asked and the answers made and, um, superintendent, I also appreciate you sharing. Changes that you have made during the process based upon committee input and areas that. We have highlighted and members of the public highlighted as a concern. So this is. A living, breathing budget, it does evolve and, um, I think it's in a better place. Uh, based upon this process. Also, by the way, I, I did want to, uh, call out as well, appreciate that city councilor, and, um, the action of his team. That's the first time that I have seen city council proactively reach out. To get input and work collaboratively versus waiting until their budget process in June and. You know, when more of the budget is locked in. So I, I thought it was actually a, a very thoughtful approach and, you know, reading through their concerns. Were very similar to the concerns we were raising as well. Superintendent, I appreciate, I did have a question about alt ed because that is obviously has always been a big area of concern of mine. I appreciate. That you're still looking at that and have made some adjustments on it as well. Um, I do want to ask. You know, we talked earlier, uh, about the, the response to the state. About the importance of literacy and having high quality materials. And I know an investment has been made on that. I'm curious in, in talking with other districts that have also been doing this. You know, the biggest issue as well is about professional development. Make, and it was referenced tonight, uh, the teachers and staff trained on using the materials and able to. Implement it with fidelity, et cetera. And so superintendent, do you feel there's enough of an investment in professional development? Particularly around those areas, um, you know, that we've discussed in the high quality curriculums and. You know, really, I want to say standardizing it more, right? Which is what you have many and it's tough in a district that has autonomy, but. If you could talk to me your feelings about the professional development budget.
Yeah. So I, I think this was, was something that, um. You know, we spent a, quite a bit of time the last two years, uh, as we phased the materials in. It's really been kind of the core work of the principals with their time, with their teachers and educators. And so I think it's gone at a pace because there's always this, um, you know, a pace that you have to strike of absorption. And how much time you're spending on it. And I, I think right now we're in a good place, given the survey data that we're seeing. Uh, it, you know, back from the regional networks, but also as we go in and do the observations of the classroom and the classroom tool ops, uh, kit. What we're seeing is that the educators are using those high quality instructional materials. And they're using them with their, to improve their instruction. So I think we're hitting a good stride on this. Um, I think, you know, uh, inclusive ed will be like another area that I think. In terms of P D as inclusive ed begins to really roll out, uh, we'll have to work with our union partners around what that looks like. Um, but for this coming year and this budget, I, I think, uh, at this point with all the different. Uh, ways in which we're, we're, uh, implementing P D, uh, I, I do think we're in a good balance with this.
Okay. Um, I also want to talk about operational planning, you know. We learned from B A A and Dearborn, our last two new buildings. How much of time and effort? It takes to actually plan to be in a brand new building that's very different and lining up your programming with it and. Um, it takes time and effort, both of which cost money. And we have, you know, two. Buildings that will be coming online pretty soon, the Quincy and the Carter, um, actually three, because the Horace Mann, a block away from me here in Charleston. The amount of work going on there is breathtaking. And so have we built enough into the budgets? For those schools to be able to, you know, learn from B A A and Dearborn, both of whom, by the way, had some backup financial support that they were able to. Reference that I'm not quite sure the Quincy and the Carter or Horace Mann would have as well. So are we building in enough support for them? To do the operational planning?
Yeah. So this is actually, uh, I, I really appreciate this question because I do think. There is so much that goes into moving into a new building and what that does to a school culture. Uh, and, uh, and particularly if there's extra programming with it, it's actually an area we are looking at right now relative to Quincy Upper. Um, and, you know, will with the Carter. Um, I do think one of the key differences is that we've never had a capital planning department in the way we do now. And so there will be a lot more assistance available that wasn't necessarily available when B A A was moving in or when Dearborn was. But this is an area that, um, I have the team looking at, uh, to make sure. It's, it, you know, people think more of the materials and the supplies and it's actually the human infrastructure and. Organizationally, like how we move, um, and the culture. So that's an area that we are looking at relative to Quincy Upper since that's the first one through the shoot.
That we in, um, in the capital planning R C budget that we created, we took it to account factors operationally that we need to do. To make these moves and make these shifts and build it all out and implement the work. So I just want to note that as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that from the, from the district side. I do think the schools themselves will need some support in their budget, even if it's. You know, a one year type thing, um, and you know, then right after that will be short tail or will need it hopefully in a couple of years and. Hopefully B C A, McCormick, et cetera, but we need to make sure to think about how to support the schools in their budget for that planning because. As much as the capital support is there. And can do some of the work, a lot of it has to be done by in the schools, in the teachers, the program leads, et cetera. Yep. So I would really appreciate to make sure that there's support for them in there. One more question superintendent, and we've talked about this in detail, so. I, I just, from a high level viewpoint and listening to the parents, uh, who spoke tonight, you know, we've certainly heard from the Manning and the clap and the. Blackstone and their hand has. Most of the concerns about budgetary impacts, Manning. They're talking about the changes in the teaching model and, you know, you and I were out there recently together superintendent, could you just? Talk a bit more about the manning, do you see this more as an academic change in how it's being approached or is it truly a budget driven change?
So I think it's a combination of things. I think, um, first of all, I, you know, I think I've said from the start that. Esser actually just started to fund our schools the way they should have been. So the loss is real to our schools and to our school communities and I would never. Uh, I would never, uh, undervalue what's been said because, uh, you know, to, to many point. Um, you know, the people that are impacted relative to positions, uh, or initiatives and partners. Uh, those are very real and they're tangible and school communities are going to have to figure out as we move through this, how to do things differently. Without some of those things. I think in the case of, uh, Manning and, you know, certainly like our team will go back, we. We always go back after public comment and take a look at, um, you know, uh, what's been, what's been said and shared. I, I think it's a combination that, uh, there was some loss of Esser, uh, in, with that positional. But I think that they're trying to make a change of model, um, where they're leveraging in a different way. The, the team of educators that are in and around. Uh, and so ra- different than just having two educators in each room. The idea is knowing you're going to have special education students, multilingual learners and, uh, you know, in, in same classrooms at different times. It's really responding to the needs of the students and looking at the I E Ps. And so I think that. Um, you know, anytime you've been doing one, it at one particular way and then you shift from that, there's going to be that sense of. Why are we doing this? This is, you know, what we were doing, uh, was working before. Um, so this will be one that we have to, I think, really work with the Manning on, uh, in, in, in together in partnership. Uh, and so that's one of the notes that I took away to follow up with them.
Um, Madam Chair, I see I'm out of time, so I'll stop because I see Dr. Elkins has questions, but I'd like to come back one more time quickly.
Dr. Elkins?
Yes, this is just a quick question. I'm actually curious as having a. What having a small influx of, of students, um, more, more recently, what that might do. And as you all are thinking about the budget being a, an evolving, breathing, um, proposal. Have you thought anything about sort of like the recent influx of students and how that might impact us?
Yeah. So, uh, so absolutely, I appreciate that one, Dr. Elkins. So, um. I, I think, uh, actually we started to see, uh, a much larger increase in our newly arrived students. Uh, actually a year ago really, and our projections reflected that in this year's budget. The fortunate thing for us is that we're such a large district that, um, when students come in. We're, we're generally able to move or to make the change we need. To respond to a particular need or need of a group of students. So in the case of our newly arrived immigrants, we were able to find the seedage. Uh, you know, in, in schools and then be able to kind of work with partners to provide other kinds of supports for those students. We, we need to always be nimble enough and I think this is, and I think David brought up that. We, we always have some amount of efficiency dollars or reserve dollars to respond in that case. So in hypothesis say. Uh, we did not see a tremendous amount of Slife students in the newly arrived students that we've served. But say we had and we had to operationalize new Slife classrooms, we would have the resources to be able to make that kind of a shift in that kind of a move.
Yes, I was just wondering if it actually had more of an impact. I know, I think there was what like? One million that was allocated around like student support and addressing things like chronic absenteeism. Just didn't know if that's where, if there was any change in the allocation that that might be where it goes or. So that was part of my question as well.
So, uh, okay. So the newly arrived students kind of got that side now, chronic absenteeism. So we just kicked off win the day, which is our very large campaign. We're doing it, you know, huge shout out to Chief McCarthy and his team. Um, I really think that they've been so thoughtful in how they've approached this. Uh, we're starting in region eight. And we have a tremendous amount of partners, including the faith-based community that's ha- helping to lift this up. In the business community in terms of getting the word out, we will take that practice and learn from that and then. Uh, we'll be able to expand beyond that. Uh, so in the student support department, there are dollars. We were able, and this is like another example where things were funded on Esser that were vital to the operations that are school facing. And, uh, you know, our SOAs and chronic absenteeism was one of them. So those got shifted to the general dollars. Uh, in, in invested in. And so that enables us to be able to do the home visits, it enables us to be able to. Uh, launch a lot of the strategies that we have that we see our chronic absenteeism coming down. Um, so I, I, I believe that, uh, restorative justice is, is a, in practice is another example of that. Where it was started on Esser and that's core work. And so that's now been moved over through the regional, uh, network model into the hard dollars. So I believe that through your advocacy and others advocacy around what I would call kind of the core components of student support. We've done a, a pretty thoughtful job and added more, uh, because it has been such a priority. We've done a, a pretty thoughtful job and added more uh because it has been such a priority uh for you and for others on the committee.
Back to you, Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so just a, a couple more points and really appreciated uh Mr. Bloom's. Comment in the conversation about. Weighted student funding formula and moving away from it because it, it does have me concerned as clearly other members of the committee have expressed as well. Because I remember so much when it first went in. The inequities it exposed in the district and. Schools that were severely underfunded and quite frankly, schools that were overfunded. And when we dug in, it was usually, you know, because of favoritism or. Teachers who knew, principals who knew how to work the system and so on and so forth. And it really exposed inequities in our system. That's where soft landings first came from to kind of help the schools that were going to be cutting budgets. Get used to it, so to speak, and it's, it's become a crutch over the years. Um, so I, I heard Mr. Bloom say. It will still be a formula. And that's important to know because I want to make sure superintendent, how you ensure that we don't creep back. Into a system that favoritism. Could make a difference, so to speak. I want to make sure we're equitable to our schools, so.
Yeah, this is, this is, um, it's a, it's a great point to, to underscore. I think we heard this loud and clear from the reimagining funding committee. Um, and I think unfortunately weighted student formula with such a decline in enrollment in so many schools. It actually lo- allowed for lots of that to creep in. Um, with soft landing and with advocacy uh either by communities, you know, or, or uh, you know, leaders and. We, we need to get back to where it is a very transparent way that we can account for the money we have with our schools. And I think that's what CFO Bloom was talking about.
Yeah, and I'll just say the, the, the promise I can make. Um, at least in an interim basis for now, um, is that, um. That part of the budget where you can go from zero to every school's budget. And understand if you're willing to sit down with a spreadsheet, sort of look through all the math and see where, what the rules were that everything came from. I think we're really committed to continuing that, that component of weighted student funding really needs to continue. And then the other thing I'll just add, and I think it's been very true this year in a very good, positive way. Is we need to continue to talk about. How an individual school's feedback, whether it be to this body or to individual members of district administration or others. How is that representative of a district wide trend? And how do we address that in an equitable manner across the district? So if a school is coming and saying they need another social worker. If even if we think they're right, we don't just give them a social worker. We identify. What are the conditions that made our allocations of social worker not work for this school? And what other schools does that apply to? So we can update our rules. And I think what we found in weighted student funding is we were continually over the years. Needing to build rules that weren't weighted student funding to ensure equity. So we had to allocate social workers separately. We had to allocate family liaison separately. And eventually what we sort of realized is, you know, every year what we're learning from the committee, from the public, from others, from the feedback is. Just adjusting the weights isn't working. Uh, Mr. O'Neil, I remember in our initial. So our, our first few budgets with you and with Chair Robinson. Um, we would talk about changing the weights and that would be the adjustments we would make. We would add the homelessness weight, for example. We had talked about adjusting the weight for high school and then we walked that back after some pressure, right? Um, and I think. What we really found was adjusting the weights wasn't the answer to the problems we were having. Right? It is, it's needing a different approach. And so, um, really the core of this is based on a lot of feedback, the sort of echo. Of the school committee of, of years of feedback is in the steering committee's advice and in the reports and where we're heading. Um, sort of to say, how do we make this work more efficiently and effectively? And what are the components of it we need to keep? We're not just throwing everything away and forgetting the lessons we've learned. But really building on the things that worked. While potentially moving on from the parts that, that really seem to stop.
Uh, efficient and effectively love it. Let's make sure equitably is in there as well.
Of course.
And I, and I know it is, but I just, I need to say that. My last point as my time runs out is. You know, I spent some time uh this past weekend with some other districts who were really facing. You know, big cliffs because with the federal government money going away and the Secretary of Education says they're just passing the baton to states. Right? They were filling a gap for a short period, but it's passing baton to states and a lot of states aren't picking up that baton. So. A lot of districts are really, really struggling. Um, we are incredibly blessed to have the city's support and the financial. You know, the step up um at the expense of apartments in the city. However, having said that, you know, I, I know a suggestion has been made and I wholeheartedly endorse it that. We need to be doing some multi-year planning, even if. You know, the farther out, if we do five years, for example, we're really guessing what's going to be happening years two, three and four, but there are changes coming. To the tax base in this city. With the reliance on commercial property and so many requests for abatements now. More will probably end up shipping and the mayor has been talking about this publicly, right? So. Uh, more will probably end up shipping, shipping, uh shifting to the residential tax base. Um. But we need to be thinking about the impact and the city's ability to fund us and what's going to happen with the district. And I'm not sure if it's. Uh, superintendent, if it's, it's the financial team trying to look out five years, if we ask some outside experts to think about this, you know, we have some. Pretty smart financial people in this city, um, you know, consultants, et cetera. Maybe we can get a group to do pro bono. Bounty for them, I'm not sure, but I think, uh, you know, some five year. Planning financially with, you know, scenario A, B and C to help us as a committee. To better respond to future budgetary requests, I think could be really helpful.
And I will just say this year for the first time since we launched our long-term financial plan in my first year in B P S nine years ago. We have worked with our partners in the city to start to build a joint multi-year financial forecast. So that they can also understand as they build their financial forecasting, what are our cost levers and our cost drivers? Right? And so we've been talking to the CFO and her team, um. In a really deep partnership that I very much appreciate, um, sort of. Making sure that they understand what we see coming over the horizon for us. So that we can really build, build something together. And so this is just obviously it's early phases, but it. It's a really important partnership with City Hall that I am looking forward to building on.
Yeah, but just as member, and I appreciate that, but as member Cadet Hernandez talked about external validation on the literacy. It, it, you know, in the curriculum, it may help to have some external validation on financial forecasts. Just want to, just want to put it up there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Cadet Hernandez.
Um, s- I have three questions. I don't know if all of them can be answered and I think some of them are actually just around how. For me to get to a yes on the budget, what I will need, and maybe it's about the presentation for next week as well. I think. There's sort of two things that remain. I appreciate uh Mr. O'Neil's question about the sort of future planning of the budget. My fear. Given what the city has put in, plus the Esser rollover is like, we're not having real conversations that like. There will, I suspect there is a budget for the next fiscal year that is also a budget that has cuts. And. It, and the way that we forecasted. The, and, and got folks starting to anticipate what that was going to look like for this year. I, I don't feel like we're doing that for what the future year looks like. And that's the sort of house of cards feeling I fear in the current sort of presentation of the budget, like. And so I, I am wondering, I think maybe what I'm asking here and I'm sort of thinking as I'm talking. But like in whatever our next conversation is or throughout the course of the next week. It's like, what are the things that will be shifting? This is the budget for now, but there are changes to come. And like, what is that? Where we've had these sort of theoretical conversa- conceptual conversations about like a new student. Funding mechanism or formula or classroom formula, but that's super opaque. We've had conversations around consolidations and mergers. But like without any real numbers, so that still feels opaque. We do know that there is money rolling over from Esser. We do know the city's pitched in a lot and. You know, they're watching this like i- is that something that we're anticipating for future years or if not, what are the types of things? That will continue to shift as, one, I think we move into further consolidation. But also as we start getting real about the resources that we have to work with. And I'm just hoping that that can be part of our conversation. As we go into the vote, sort of like what else is to come so that we're being honest about this budget in relationship to what it does later and. You know, no business is just sort of looking at a single year forecast, like we, you're talking multi-year. And that we can do the same and we know the city's doing that and we know that you're doing that behind the scenes. So like, what does that mean and what does that look like? And what can we expect as a school committee to be thinking about? Um, and then I think the second thing for me is we've referenced a lot earlier in the presentation. The reports from Council of Great City Schools and things like that that we submitted to D E S I. I still don't have clarity on which of those recommendations we're taking and how that aligns to this budget. And I do think it would be really helpful for us to know, we have some of the sort of like. Um, again, like these sort of conceptual ideas around our, the sort of value proposition of the city. And I'm not su- I haven't felt very clear on how that aligns to goals. And so there's the student academic goals and then there are these other. Recommendations that I'm, I'm suspecting this budget is moving on, that I'm curious where. Which recommendations are we taking in the next year and how does that align to the budget? And I think the last thing I'll say here and you choose, if there's any of it to discuss. This evening or if it's something you want to reference for next time, we know that there are layoffs. I understand the complexity. Given labor agreements around the sort of end. And unfilled vacancies and all the things, but I do think it's important for us as we go into a vote to have real clarity around the projected number. Of layoffs in the system, what we think will be able to backfill. And also the timeline for when those layoffs will begin, because that is also part of what we're voting for.
Okay, so I, I think definitely on the Council Great City Schools recommendations, we, we will queue that up uh to be able to show that to you. Um, and then on the layoffs, we'll, we'll talk with O H C about this. I think for all the reasons we discussed, the timeline is a little bit off. Um, we could probably do a worst case scenario and a best case scenario and that's probably. Uh, what we can do, but uh we will, we'll have the discussion with O H C.
Perfect. And on the future thinking, I'm sure you can lend some thoughts to that going in, like this is this budget that. Your pers- the final budget you're presenting with the changes that you're presenting and some of the un- the. Things that are unspoken are like what's to come in the following fiscal year that one can anticipate.
Yeah, I think, I think what we can do is we may be able and I'll, I'll talk to CFO Bloom, but what we may be able to do there is. Uh, to talk about what could be the co- like potential cost savings where we sort of see. Uh, again, these are going to not be like close to the mark, but. Uh, to be able to sort of reassure the committee, um, you know, relative to the budget we're putting forward.
Yeah, and, and an understanding of your priorities too, as you're having to make those decisions, what? What you're, okay, thank you.
Thank you, um. Most of my questions have been answered. Um, but a couple of things, and I think this is more of an observation for me having now going through this process about thinking. Through not only what decisions are ahead of us immediately, but thinking ahead till next year. And thinking of a lot of the questions and that, that are out there that have been, that you've been working to answer. To me, still need a lot of monitoring as we move forward into the next year. And I know we've talked briefly before about perhaps. Having some kind of um budget related task force, working group, et cetera. So that we are looking at this budget throughout the year, particularly in a year as we know, there are so many changes coming. To our schools with regard to, you know, inclusion. Green New Deal, all of those things that just starting these conversations in December and, you know, moving. With lots of energy towards a vote in, in March, I think doesn't do. Service well to all of the hard work and all of the thinking that goes on your lung, not only for us in the public. But really to get our schools much more engaged in understanding about the budget process within their own school. And the choices that their school community is making. I mean, I, it, it, you know, it always feels when they're coming. To us with their questions or concerns as if it's the district or our fault that certain. Decisions were made within their schools. And wanting to fully understand, you know, how those decisions are being made. And if there are problems with our process. Or concerns even with the process being done well in a school that the outcome. Doesn't feel quite right, how we have more opportunity discuss and look at how schools are managing. Themselves throughout the year and, and where we need to look at other kinds of investments. And that coupled with, I think, listening to the concerns we continue to raise around declining enrollments. Et cetera, and greater needs that it continues to point us back to the fact. That we do have to be honest with ourselves around the mergers and closures and creating a district. That is right, the right, that offers the right opportunities. For all of our students. We know our larger high schools offer more than some of our smaller high schools. Wh- what do those facts tell us about the district? We need to be creating so that we can really say all of our students get what they need. And, and I feel ha- part of it is based on the way we're organized. That that's hurting us as much as, you know, not having all the dollars that one would need. Esther did give us a better picture of what our schools need in terms of funding. And with that going away, the need doesn't go away. Um, and we can't manufacture dollars. So, you know, it just feels like, um. As we say in this transitional year, a lot of issues have been raised, but I don't want to see those conversations stopping. With our taking a vote and then moving on. So superintendent, I'd like to, you know, have us think together about. What kind of a working group or task force or whatever. You would want to call it that we could have so that we could continue the monitoring around our budgetary issues as we move through um the school year.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion, Chair, and uh we'd definitely welcome that. I think in the area of finance and facilities, that's going to be an ongoing.
Yeah. Yeah. My only, my only budget question uh relates to partly to the SOA conversation around early childhood. And um, the data we looked at that was showing the big drop between K two readiness and second grade. And wondering, um, with equitable literacy and other things. What are the, what are the investments that we are making? Um, kindergarten, first and second grade literacy. I mean. As an early childhood educator, um, if we are not giving our kids the strongest foundation when they're young. And we are already hitting a cliff, you know, at that. Before the third grade reading, um, it just feels like we've got to do something different. Um, because otherwise I feel like we're setting our kids up for failure. Um, when they seem to have been on a great start. So, you know, are there efforts being made? Are there going to be more reading specialists? Um, you know, I know we're getting good curriculum, sort of what is it and are we budgeting it? At the highest level and um as a, one of our highest needs to make sure we're trying to close this gap. Before it actually goes too deep.
Uh, so, uh, uh, I will say, uh, a couple of things and then Dr. Chen, you might want to weigh in on this a bit more. I think this is where the investment in, in the, both the materials, but also in the calibration of the instruction. I think this is where, you know, we're creating momentum so that as the students get older, the grades. That we typically kind of see that second, third grade, there's other safety nets for the students. And that is the strengthening of the M T S process in a way that hasn't existed here before. So I, I, I do think we are better positioned to not have that decline happen in the way that it has. And where it happens, like where a student is still struggling, there's now safety nets. As well as different levels of literacy curriculum uh that just hasn't worked cohesively. Uh, in the way that Dr. Chen and her team are now lining it up. Uh, and Dr. Chen, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Sure, I think some of.
Sure, I think some of this is also two things. One is the monitoring and accountability, Chair, that you had mentioned. Previously, and in this context, um, we are, we have very specific walkthrough tools that look at early literacy. And especially foundational literacy, um, implementation. That way we know where are the places that need more support. And the regional coaches can provide then that support to the places that need it the most. I think the other piece is, um, knowing where students are in terms of our MAP fluency data. And then also this past year, we had MTSS coordinators begin, so there's one in every school. Next year, um, we're making sure to look at very closely the documentation of the additional supports that may be needed. For students through reading interventionists or other folks to be able to make sure. That no one slips through the cracks, like there's, we are tracking the data of students, we are tracking the implementation of instruction. And then we are following up with the kinds of supports a student may need beyond the tier-one. Um, high-quality instruction materials implementation. And the other thing I would say too is what we're doing, moving forward with our earliest learners that are multilingual learners is making sure. That we have native language access and supports in the classrooms in more formal ways. So that students are able to also leverage their native language to acquire English and to learn content areas.
Thank you. All right, as we go to wrap up this, um, conversation, I wanna say. Great thanks to David Bloom and his team and Superintendent and. All of your chiefs and assistant superintendents and everyone. Who I know has both worked very hard to bring this budget to fruition. But also to thank you all for answering all of the questions that we have asked, and I know that there's still some. To ask, and I just want to remind, I might say, my, um, fellow members that, um, we are taking this vote next week. Need you to make sure that you've read through all of the materials, looked back at school committee meetings that you may have missed. Um, to get other questions, um, but and to please take advantage this week of your time to meet with, um. Superintendent or staff to get any, um, additional questions answered. And with that, I want to turn it back to Ms. Parvex and so that we can now return to public comment. Ms. Parvex?
There's no puppy, there's no more speakers.
Thank you. So any new business? That includes our business for this evening. As a reminder, the school committee meeting is holding virtual meetings on Zoom now through the end of March. We go back in person in April, so next week is our last virtual meeting. Um, the next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh at five P M. At which time the committee will vote on the superintendent's revised fiscal year twenty-five budget recommendations. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion?
No, Chair, may I make a comment about the motion? Just wanna, um, compliment and thank Ms. Parvex for her first meeting as our new executive secretary. Which was actually a double meeting, a budget hearing and, and the school committee meeting, so. Um, big shoes to fill with Ms. Sullivan and her sixteen years, but look forward to your work, Ms. Parvex. And forgot to mention before, you're also a, a B, well, we're a BPS parent and, and are a BPS parent, right? A war of BPS. They're both graduates, yes. Excellent, but, uh, I just want to compliment you on your first meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, here in on this now, Ms. Parvex, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Lima Barbosa?
Yes.
Ms. Planko Garcia, Mr. Fran?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.